Good evening and welcome to tonight's Pleasanton City Council meeting in beautiful downtown Pleasanton. It is February 15th and we would like to stand for a pledge of allegiance. Councilmember Tester, would you lead, please?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. Do we have some remarks for our community council member?
I do indeed. Good evening. I would like to share an update regarding upcoming news and events impacting Pleasanton residents. Next Thursday, February 24th, this council will convene for a public input meeting on Pleasanton's transit transition to district-based elections. At this meeting, we will continue our review and discussion of the proposed district boundary maps. After having received resident input and provided feedback to the demographer, at this fourth meeting, our discussion will be focused on identifying a final map. All community members are encouraged to attend the meeting. Please join us via Zoom at 7:00. On the city's district election webpage, you'll find maps, meeting details, and login information, as well as recordings from past public input meetings. Visit cityofpleasantonca.gov backslash district elections. In other news, recruitment is now open for a variety of city commissions and committees. The city council recruits commissioners and committee members to help make decisions and provide advice on important community issues. Qualified applicants are needed for various vacancies, including on the Committee on Energy and Environment, Housing Commission, Human Service Commission, I was on the Human Service Commission for many years, among other commissions and committees. Applications are being accepted online through Monday, March 7th by 5:00 PM. Find out more and apply on the city website by searching boards and commissions in the search window. Back to you, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Clerk, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, councilmembers, Arkin.
Here.
Balch.
Present.
Merrim.
Present.
Tester.
Here.
Mayor Brown.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I wonder, Jocelyn, could you please give some directions for anyone at home that would like to speak later this evening on an agenda item or an item that is not listed on the agenda under matters open to the public?
Yes. Members of the public may participate in the Zoom meeting by using the raise your hand function when public comment is opened on an agenda item. You will be unmuted when your name is called and you will be remuted after the allotted time. To raise your hand, click the raise your hand button or star nine on your telephone. To unmute your phone, press star six.
Excellent, thank you. I know many people log on and then they're asking, did you hear me? Did you hear me? Because process, especially if it's your first time, is a little cumbersome, but once you get the hang of it, you'll be in pro. So I wondered, Attorney Sotogren, could you report out on closed session, please?
There's no reportable action from tonight's closed session. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. City Manager Dolan, do we have any agenda amendments by staff?
None from staff.
Thank you. And do we have any agenda amendments by council members? There are raise your hand. And I do not see any, so we're gonna go move forward with our agenda as it is. Love it. So the first part of our meeting is the consent calendar. These are items considered routine in nature and normally approved with a single vote of the council. So do we have anybody that would like to speak from the public on our consent calendar? Jocelyn?
Yes, I have several speaker cards. The first is from Sharon Pikarski for item three.
Good evening, Mayor Brown and council. I assume you can hear me.
We sure can.
I've done this before.
Thank you, Sharon.
First, I would like to thank Megan Campbell, the Energy and Environment Committee, and all the others who have contributed over the last couple of years to complete the CAP 2.0. It's truly exciting to see the plan's adoption. It is vitally important, not just for our children and grandchildren, but with the rapid-changing climate for all of us as well. In a recent New York Times opinion piece, Arnold Schwarzenegger stated that California is currently on track to reach our 2030 goals by 2065 and our 2050 goals by 2111. So this plan, unlike so many other city plans, is not one to be implemented when it becomes convenient or when we find someone else to pay for it. We must actively work at adoption if we are to meet the 2030 goals. Since transportation at 65% is such a large portion of our greenhouse gas emissions, it's imperative that we promote active transportation. Children should be riding and walking to school. Workers should be riding to work or to public transportation. We should also be running errands by bike. It's critical that the bicycle pedestrian master plan, which is labeled as ongoing in CAP 2.0, is actively implemented. This plan was approved four years ago and we are still talking about conceptual designs and have only a portion of funding for the highest priority corridor. Because of the need to rebuild West Los Pecitas, the projected completion isn't until 2025. The second highest priority corridor rated only C in the current two-year priority list and repairing trails that have become dangerous were eliminated from the priority list altogether. We are seeing more bike lanes as part of the Complete Streets program. However, for most people, having just a painted line between them and a vehicle going 45 miles an hour is just too intimidating. We must build a network that makes all ages and abilities comfortable. During the last four years, the city has committed millions on projects to encourage driving, including parking lots and widening intersections for better traffic throughput. If we are to meet the 2030 goals, that will have to change. The city will have to commit to speeding up, build the bike and pedestrian facilities, and to funding a bigger share of active transportation projects rather than so heavily depending on grants and developers for funding. We have only eight years left to dramatically reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Vehicles are expensive and last a long time. We can't just hope for a huge move to electric vehicles within this timeframe or depend on such feel-good options like planting trees that take a decade or two to be large enough to sequester meaningful amounts of carbon. We simply must get out of our cars. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Sharon. Our next speaker, please.
Ram Prasad Suryarama for items six and seven.
Hi, I'm talking on behalf of Ram Prasad Suryarama. I think we, he selected that item by mistake.
Okay, do you want to speak on an item that's on the consent calendar?
I know, we're good, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, our next speaker.
I have a request from Terry Townsend regarding item six.
Okay.
Councilmembers, this is Natalie Amos, Associate Planner. I'm just gonna jump in ahead of Terry. They had filled out the speaker cards in case that item got pulled from consent, so Terry's the applicant and Ron is the property owner. So just to clarify why they were on that in case they have to be pulled as panelists this evening.
Great, thank you, Natalie. All right, our next speaker.
We have no further requests to speak.
Okay, close the public hearing on the consent calendar and bring it back to the council for questions, comments, or a motion. Would anybody like to start? Yes, councilmember Arkin?
Yes, I just have to state that I do need to recuse on items number six and seven due to my close proximity of where my residence is in regards to these properties.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Balch?
Yeah, so I just wanted to say on consent, I'm trying to be a little less wordy. I do recognize CAP 2.0 is on as item three. And I know we have a weighty agenda, so I didn't pull it, but it is important and I just wanted to voice my support to that and the good work that Megan and the crew did. We've seen it before and it's up on our website and so people can still participate. And then I also just wanted to mention, item 11 is the debt management policy for the city of Pleasanton. If any finance people are out there, want to know about how we do debt or what debt options are available. But with that, I will move consent.
All right, we have a motion. I'm looking for a second.
A second.
All right, councilmember Tester is second to the motion. Any comments before we take a roll call vote? Yes, councilmember Narum.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Balch, are you incorporating the email we received from Ellen Clark on the solar water heaters into the CAP 2.0?
Oh, thank you, yes, please.
Okay.
Sorry, I will amend my motion to include that.
And councilmember Tester, as the person who made the second, would you accept that amendment?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, any other comments? All right, roll call vote for the consent calendar, please.
Councilmember Balch.
Aye.
Tester.
Aye.
Merrim.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Arkin.
Aye, with six and seven, I'm recusing.
Thank you, and Mayor Brown?
Aye, yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, today, we are, we have something special today. It is a proclamation for Rotary in Pleasanton. And I believe councilmember Narum is a member of Rotary, is that right?
That's correct.
Yay.
Downtown Rotary.
Downtown Rotary. I had the honor and privilege to present these proclamations with the, if it is titled correctly, District Governor Mr. Richard Flanders and the presidents of the organizations for North Rotary, Downtown Rotary, and the Evening Rotary, which takes place over at Castle Wood. So they had a window of time, so we did go ahead and present it. But today, very pleased to have a full reading of the proclamation by our councilmember Tester. Councilmember?
Yes, absolutely. Tonight, we have a proclamation presentation recognizing February as Rotary in Pleasanton Month. In the city of Pleasanton, we have three Rotary Clubs that provide significant contributions to our community. In celebration of the anniversary of the organization's founding, my fellow councilmembers and I signed a proclamation recognizing the great work of these local Rotary Clubs. Joining us tonight to accept the proclamation is Rotary District Governor Richard Flanders. I will begin by reading some excerpts from the proclamation and will then invite the district governor to say a brief few words. Whereas Rotary is an international service organization whose motto is service above self with 1.5 million Rotarians spread across more than 46,000 clubs and united by a common vision of people joining together to create lasting change within their communities and across the globe. The three Rotary Clubs in Pleasanton are the Rotary Club of Pleasanton, the Rotary Club of Pleasanton North, and the Tri-Valley Evening Rotary Club. And whereas the Rotary Club of Pleasanton has been serving the community for 56 years since its founding in July 1965, through service work and funding efforts, the club has contributed more than 900,000 since 1993 towards college scholarships to Pleasanton students, funding grants to local nonprofits, and supporting life-changing projects around the world. And the club has contributed nearly $139,000 during this 2021-22 Rotary year alone to support these initiatives. And whereas the Rotary Club of Pleasanton North was chartered nearly 35 years ago in March 1987 and has raised over $2 million for local and global nonprofit organizations, hosting annual fundraising events such as its Tri-Valley Turkey Burn Run Walk and supporting youth programs through its High School Student of the Month Award, Rotary Youth Leadership Academy, speech contests and scholarships, and a perpetual scholarship each year to a student-veteran attending Los Pecitas College. And whereas the Tri-Valley Evening Rotary Club has impacted many lives over the years and provided support to many local and regional service projects, including its Family Day BBQ at the VA Hospital, Coke Collection benefiting local homeless shelters, serving over 400 areas veterans there, excuse me, serving over 400 area veterans during the East Bay Stand Down and serving over 300 neighborhood neighbors this past holiday season at its Christmas Miracle Event. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Pleasanton City Council hereby proclaims February 2022 as Rotary in Pleasanton Month. At this time, I would like to call on Richard Flanders to speak. Richard?
It's Richard.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for allowing me to come to thank the city on behalf of the three Rotary Clubs in the city of Pleasanton. We appreciate the proclamation because it's an honor to all three Rotary Clubs in the city of Pleasanton. This idea or proposal was actually discussed with former Vice Mayor Jerry Penton, who had then had a discussion with councilmember Kathy Narum, is my understanding. So we appreciate all the effort to present this proclamation for the whole entire month of February for the three clubs in the city of Pleasanton. We have done a lot, as stated in the proclamation. We have raised millions of dollars benefiting the citizens of the city of Pleasanton. We have given countless hours of community service in the city. And with your sonage that you stated in the meetings, it's sort of in line with what we're doing, which is to have a public image campaign for each club to raise the visibility of Rotary in our community, which will, we hope to lead to growth of membership. The more members we have, the more service hours we can provide to the city of Pleasanton and volunteer, to provide more volunteers and also more fundraising, which result in spending the money from the fundraising for the benefits of the citizen of Pleasanton. Again, thank you very much. This is something that has never been done in my, since I joined Rotary, but it's an honor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and.
I have one more sentence, Mayor. Just to finish the script, thank you, Richard, and all of our Rotarians.
Yay. And, Richard, you asked for a fourth copy of the proclamation since one's gone to all three different organizations, Rotary Clubs, and so a fourth one is on its way to you. So you have one, since you were specifically mentioned, and I believe you're a Pleasanton resident too, so woo-ha, like it.
Thank you, and I will, I appreciate that, and I will proudly hang that in my office so that people can see.
Yay.
What's it done for Rotary.
Terrific. All right, is that it, Julie?
It is, yes.
Fantastic, and it is a long proclamation. There was a lot to include. And when I was reading it up in front of the clubs, I think somebody typed it out in print font about nine, so it was tiny to see, but lots of good words and excellent work done on behalf of Rotary, city of Pleasanton. So thank you to our previous city councilmember and Vice Mayor Jerry Penton and also city councilmember and previous Vice Mayor Kathy Narum. So nice job, thank you. All right, okay, so that's, sorry, councilmember Tester, I did not mean to interrupt you. We were so exuberant. Richard is, wanted to say thank you, so such a good thing. We are at the public comment on our agenda. This is for items not listed on the agenda but are within our authority and purview and responsibility. So if you would like to speak on something that is not listed on this agenda, we want to hear from you. Usually you have three minutes to speak unless we have a lot of speakers, then sometimes we limit it to two minutes. So, city clerk, do we have anyone would like to speak on, this would be listed as agenda item 13?
Yes, we have several requests to speak. The first person is Rachel Hutchinson, followed by Gary Moorefield.
Is Rachel in the room?
I am, I'm not seeing her, so we can move to the next speaker, Gary Moorefield, followed by Alexander Stein. I am not seeing Gary either, so the next speaker is Alexander Stein, followed by, oh, someone didn't raise their hand, so the next speaker is Alexander Stein.
Thank you.
No Alexander either, so the next speaker is Mikhail.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm actually speaking on behalf, good evening, councilmembers. I'm actually speaking on behalf of Rachel Hutchinson. Unfortunately, she couldn't be here, but I'll be representing County Test. I'm one of the managing directors of the company. And so just wanted to share a little with the council, so we're starting a new COVID-19 community-based testing site this Friday, which will be offered through Friday the 18th through March 4th, and that'll be in partnership with the Alameda County Fairgrounds. So we're a Santa, we're a Bay Area company, where we are a medical diagnostics company. And we've been providing, you know, services, COVID testing services for the Tri-Valley area in the Pleasanton residents. And this particular site that we are opening up will not require any appointments and everyone will be welcome regardless of insurance status as well. And in addition to, you know, meeting with you all, you know, we're very excited to share that we're also working with the city council members of Livermore, San Ramon, and Dublin, and really is to inform the residents that this site will be open for services. So we currently are partnered with Predacyne Labs, which is a CAP-accredited, CLIA-certified lab based in Hayward. And, you know, we do use a HIPAA-compliant patient portal. We ensure that all state and local guidelines and protocols are followed. And all of our medical staff is trained and certified as medical assistants. And we have been, you know, working pretty diligently here in the Pleasanton area as well with the local community centers and many of the smaller schools, including Donlin Elementary School and then Demontory School here in Plenton, as well as some in Livermore. So our frontline workers, you know, really have been working tirelessly through the surge and the pandemic to serve, you know, testing needs in multiple communities. So we're very honored, you know, to have, you know, the opportunity to serve, you know, residents of Pleasanton. In addition, you know, also the residents of some of the Tri-Valley area. And, you know, we're really, really excited and really feel honored that, you know, we were able to partner with the Alameda County Fairgrounds to provide these services. So we're really starting off as two weeks from Friday the 18th to March the 4th. And then depending on what the testing needs are, then we potentially have the ability to extend as well. So just wanted to share that with you and thank you again for allowing us to have the opportunity to speak and thank you all for your services as well.
Thank you, Mikhail. Thank you. Thank you for offering these great services. You're right, more people need COVID testing. It's wonderful to have an additional site there at Alameda County Fairgrounds. All right, our next speaker?
We have no further speakers, Mayor.
All right, well, we'll close. Agenda item 13, that is our public comments for items not listed on the agenda. And we'll move on to agenda item 14. This is a public hearing to consider a planned unit development plan vesting tentative division, subdivision map, excuse me, an affordable housing agreement for approximately 112 acres vacant site adjacent to 1,000 Mini Drive. And councilmember Balch, you have your hand up?
Yeah, Mayor, if I may, I must recuse from this item and do my little disclosure, so the city attorney will let me know if I've done it adequately. But per FPPC letter that I received on January 10th, the FPPC has concluded that my aunt and uncle, who live adjacent to the subject property, are an indirect source of income to me to a sufficient level that requires my recusal from this item. So I think through the power of Zoom, I will be sitting out.
Do you need to turn off your camera for us? Oh, I think he's out. Okay. All right, everything look okay, Attorney Sotogren?
Thanks.
Okay, it's all good. All right, okay, we're looking forward to a staff presentation on Spaturna Ranch.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I wanted to introduce this item, which is a consideration of a planned unit development application for the 22 lots, Spaturno Ranch subdivision, as well as associated approvals of a vesting tentative map and affordable housing agreement. I'd like to introduce staff tonight. Associate Planner Jenny Su will be providing the presentation. We also have other city staff in attendance from Traffic Engineering, engineering, and from our Planning Division Office to answer questions that the council might have. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jenny for her presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Good evening, Mayor and the City Council. As I already mentioned, the application in front of you is a Spaturno Ranch residential development known as the PUD 138 and a vesting tentative map 8616. The project site is in the Happy Valley area. In 1998, the city council adopted Happy Valley's specific plan, which guides future developments in the 860-acre specific plan area, including both incorporated and unincorporated land. The Happy Valley specific plan includes residential, agricultural, and open space uses. The project site is a vacant site of approximately 112 acres in area. It is identified as a lot number 98 by the specific plan and its uses designated as planned unit development, semi-rural residential uses, agriculture uses, and open space uses. More specifically, this specific plan allows a total of 22 single-family residential lots in approximately 30-30 acre portion of the site. Before us, the Spaturno flat showing here, we call this as the panhandle area. It's pretty much right in this area. And the specific plan also said you could have such a number of units if you develop the site with a major open space land or agriculture open space easement dedication. Here is the, in overall, of the project site in the contest of the Happy Valley area. As you can see, the project site is nested in the Happy Valley area and it is bordered on by the Alasol Street to the west and the south, single-family residential uses to the north, south, and west, and the West Bridge Lane to the south. And this is the church named Happy Valley, a faith chapel assembling church of God and to the south. The western portion of the project site known here as the Spaturno flat is indeed quite a flat. And here is the historical windmill. And this area, which shows largely over here, it's quite healing and the slope takes up and starting from this area, and you can see from the different shades of the colors. As I mentioned earlier, the project site is about 112 acres inside. The development area is about 33 acres and for 22 units. And the remaining 80 acres right here is designated for open space. This is the view of the project site from Alasol Street as well as West Bridge Lane. As you can see, it is pretty flat and for the project area, and this is pretty much the the eastern edge of the development area and then the slope just takes up, starting there. The project in front of the council includes a planned unit development for 22 single-family detached homes with 22 accessory dwelling unit. The project proposal also includes a setup. The project proposal also includes a set of design guidelines, which would provide the design criteria for future homes. That's intended to map to subdivide the existing site into 25 lots, which included 22 single-family residential lots and two commonly owned lots, which is for public use and it's owned by the Future Homeowners Association, as well as the large open space area I have shown in the prior slide that will be retained by the Spaturna family for agriculture use. The subdivision, the subdivision proposal also includes on and off site improvements as well as trails throughout the project, as well as along West Bridge Lane and Alasal Trail. To accommodate the proposed development, there is a segment of an existing roadway is within the development area and has been there for decades. And this road we needed to be vacate and the staff have noticed all the public agencies for any concerns, any comments, and we received them now. So we consider there is no protest to remove this public road easement. Part to the City Council review, the project was reviewed by Parks and Recreation Commission. And they chose to review the proposed trail layout and receive the full support from the Parks and Recreation Commission. The project was also reviewed by the Housing Commission for the Affordable Housing Agreement. The Housing Commission was very pleased to see the applicant voluntary proposing 22 ADUs throughout the project area on each of the proposed residential lots. The project was also by the Planning Commission in December. The Planning Commission reviewed the proposal and it found it is consistent with the Happy Valley specific plan as well as the Happy Valley specific plans final EIR. And the commission found the proposed density of the project is a consistent with the general plan and as well as the Happy Valley specific plan. The proposal the Planning Commission found satisfied the PUD ordinance as well, as well as the subdivision map. The Planning Commission found the design guideline reflects the characters of the Happy Valley in home design. And during the other the Planning Commission meeting, the focus of the commission's meeting was on the Alasal Street, which as the City Council know, it is a county and a street which surrounding the project area. And the focus and also from the Planning Commission was how to improve the existing safety of the Alasal Street through the proposal of this project. The cut, the Planning Commission recommends the approval of the project to the City Council with modifications that specifically focus on the improved safety of the Alasal Street. And here is a proposed the site plan of the project and the sign layout is very straightforward. We have one street called Spaturna Ranch Drive, provide main access through the project. There are two access, two and a from the project site over here is on access of Alasal Street. And the second access is for West Bridge Lane. All the homes except for three were the Francis Spaturna Ranch Drive. These three homes, they will take access from West Bridge Lane. The, to minimize the drive path and to improve the safety and of the traffic and that the applicant proposed share the driveways. And so that we don't have much interaction or to lessen the interaction among the driveway access as well as pedestrians, trail, trail users and a bicycle. And here, the blue delineation, I just tried to show the council. This is the Spaturna flat area, which is for the development. It is approximately 33 acres inside. And the remaining 80 acres right over here is designated for open space and agriculture use. Also, as I mentioned, the project including three public trails. And one is called Happy Valley Loop Trail, which is the trail we're going to have more discussion later on in the presentation. This is the Alasal Trail, which the Planning Commission meeting was focused on the discussion of how to improve the Alasal street safety and how we could use this trail to implement that segment of the of the street. And the green trail is the Spaturna flat trail that loops around the proposed development and it comes down here through the open space area and then go along the street and connects to West Bridge Lane. Or it could go through the open space parcel that is the parcel between the proposed residential lots and the existing church. This parcel is also going to be maintained by the homeowners association. And also there is another route we could connect the trail, make a loop. So the residents could enjoy taking a walk. This is also the third trail which proposed by the applicant is along the West Bridge Lane. And it continues, comes over here and then goes swings on to the 80 acre open space parcel and eventually it should connect to the existing, what I call is the Kalibay Trail. So that should the loops around the entire trail in the Happy Valley area. And all three trails will be constructed as part of the project improvements. The project, as it proposed, after thorough review by a staff and applicant and also through the public hearing process by the Planning Commission. And the staff found the proposed conforms to the general plan in land use density as well as the open space requirement. And in addition to satisfy the density requirement, the proposed project also meets the Happy Valley specific plan requirement for lot size and a lot dimensions, except there is one deviation is six lots out of the 22. They are slightly narrower than the minimum requirement. And this is this narrow a lot width is substantial. It's only comes up with a 5% narrow and the staff found this is the margin of it's so diminished and we'd be able to support it. And the further reason is because of the layout, it will make the project much better. So in this way, and also when we look at the PUD allows flexibility if the result of the project is superior. So for that reason, staff believe this six lots have 5% street, the width being narrower than what is minimally required. And it's, it's very, very minor and we'd be able to support it because in general, the project meets the intent and the purpose of the specific plan. And furthermore, when we look at the development standards and also as well as the design guidelines and the staff has found the design guidelines, which is proposed by the applicant, including the the home styles, the architectural elements, and the building massing and the landscaping selections, and that they all meet with the specific plan requirements. And each of the homes and based on the design guideline, which the City Council has as a as part of the City Council package. And it's also will meet the intent and also fits into the character of the Happy Valley rural ruralness and the each of the homeowners, when they go through the design review when they go through building the homes and the design will come into the city for design reviews. So in that way, the staff could ensure the design also is compatible and consistent with the design guideline. The Pleasanton Municipal Code regarding the ADU allows detached ADU in the new PUD area to be harder than 16 feet. And the applicant proposed detached ADU to be a two-story ADU and which is more than 16 feet in height and to up to 25 feet. Staff, you're looking at this and found that this proposal is acceptable for the reason is the Happy Valley specific plan allows detached accessory buildings to be up to 25 feet in height. So given an ADU to be located on a site with a minimum of one acre size, there is enough space provided between the homes and also on the same lot as well as between the homes on the neighboring lots. And with that, the design guideline has some criteria to propose on the design of a two-story ADU, which is the second floor of the ADU need to be significantly smarter. So in this way, we don't create a boxy appearance of an ADU. So as such, the applicant has agreed to propose the ADU, the second floor of the ADU to be only as covers 40% of the first floor. So in that way, the second floor could nest into the first floor or perhaps also into the roof area. So the second building will not appear to be overwhelming and boxy looking. As I mentioned earlier, safety, pedestrian safety on Alasal Street with the focus discussion of the Planning Commission meeting. And to address the safety issues and the conditions of approval have included the traffic calming method to be proposed along Alasal Street. And also if the traffic calming method could should be installed as part of the, the subdivision improvements. And so in this way, when the project is built, all the safety measures has already been in place. And the proposed trails were staffer reviews and it is not only consistent with the Happy Valley specific plan trail map, but also is conforming to the city's trail master plan. And many of the residents through the Planning Commission meeting addressed concerns of the existing ongoing traffic situation on Alasal Street and very much request the Planning Commission as well as now the City Council to consider to improve the existing safety issues through this project. So as such, the Planning Commission recommended conditions to be tied to the construction of the safety measures to be as part of the improvement plan with the project. So staff wanted to take this opportunity to adjust to the City Council. And the condition number 18 has been revised based upon the planning commission's recommendation. And the staff has recommend the pathway along the Alasal Street from the project site all the way north to Sigmar Road to be constructed as part of the improvement plan. And the applicant has a very cooperative agreed such. When staff review a project in this scale, any project, we always look at whether or not the project has any environmental issues and what its impact it might be for the environment. And that's always the case. We have to look through all different elements and the different areas. And the California Environmental Quality Act and a company referred by staff as CEQA, it mandates that projects consistent with a development density that is established by an existing zoning or a community plan or general plan policies for which a final EIR was certified shall not require additional environmental review except as maybe necessary to exam whether there are project specific significant effort that are period to the project site or to the project itself. As such, to make sure the proposed development is consistent with the Happy Valley specific plan's final EIR, an initial study was prepared and they determined what, to what extent the impact might be at the initial study, the result of the initial study finds the proposed project is in accordance with the 1998 Happy Valley specific plan final EIR. Therefore, no additional environmental review would be necessary for this project. And also the entire analysis is also included as the last exhibits to the council agenda report. But unfortunately, that was the fire is too large and it was a digital format, but it's all available. In response to the public hearing, we noticed staff has received comments and concern from residents that staff has shared with the City Council. Concerns focus on the traffic and the safety that has already been addressed through the earlier presentation, including traffic calming method to address the issue as well as the walkway along Alasal Street for better pedestrian safety. And the concerns also mentioned the storm drain system as well as you have homes in the open field that may, may not be consistent with the rural characters of the Happy Valley area. The project as a proposed has its storm drain area. We have storm drain, a bigger retention pond in the front by Alasal Street near the windmill. And also we have storm drain on the, on the individual lots, which is facing West Bridge Lane. And our city engineering staff has a review, the authority on the proposed storm water drainage issues and found the project proposal will improve the existing situation. And drainage should not be running freely onto neighboring property during rainy seasons. And also in terms of the, the design of those homes and whether or not it is consistent or not to consider compatible or otherwise with the existing Happy Valley characters and the design guideline and proposed by the applicant and the list of variety of home styles that is compatible to the Happy Valley rural characters. And it also including very detailed architecture elements and to ensure the homes coming in, it is a compatible, not only with the characters, but it is also with the existing homes which in the Happy Valley area. So with that, in summary, staff found the proposed development meets the general plan and Happy Valley specific plan requirement in terms of density, open space easement dedication, trail connection, and vehicle circulation. And the proposed design guideline provide development standards and development criteria to ensure new homes would be designed suitable for the semi-rural neighborhood of characters and the setting. A project as a condition will help to implement the purpose of the PUD ordinance by allowing for flexible site design standards that will meet the general plan and Happy Valley specific plan. And also with the result, Ian, the best use of the site and for the best result of the development. With that, and the staff believe the proposed project merits a favorable decision by the City Council. Therefore, staff recommends the following, one, two, three, four. I'm not going to go through it and the staff, that should conclude staff's presentation. And I thank you, City Council, and the staff are here for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, let's ask some questions. This is a, this is a, a big project for us. So Councilmember Testa, questions for Jenny Sue?
Very thorough presentation. Thank you for that. I really only have a couple of questions. First, the the 22 units will all apply to our six-cycle arena. Is that correct?
Yes, I can respond to that. The, the units will be constructed during the period that would be counted towards the sixth cycle arena. So yes.
Okay, great. And then the 22 ADUs. Okay, great. And then the twenty-two ADUs will also count toward our six-cycle. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, that's all good stuff. So then. SB nine was addressed in the staff report. It makes reference to that. A future HOA could. Prohibit the SB nine provisions. And I'm just a little concerned about. So an HOA is not. A given, that's a maybe, or will the city make sure that it's put in place? And how does that timeline safeguard from the SB nine provisions?
So the project of this size and nature would would require a homeowner association to be formed. There's a lot of common maintenance areas that could only be really addressed by a homeowners association. So we will be working with the applicant to review the details of that as it comes forward. To make sure that all the maintenance and so on is responsibilities are incorporated into that document. And so that's when that discussion will will happen.
Okay, that that's reassuring. That's that's good. Okay, and I think that's all I have for now. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor Arkin, any questions for staff?
Yes, thank you. And thank you for the presentation. Very good presentation. Just a few things, and some of these came from members of the public, I believe, residents in the area that had some concern. So one concern was the water infrastructure, the well-water infrastructure. And how if there would be any negative impact to the residents there? Can you address that, please?
I'll start, and then we also have members of our engineering staff here as well if there's more detail needed. But in essence, the conclusion of all of the review completed both by our engineering staff. And in the CEQA documentation was that the project would not cause any any issues. And in fact, having a more structured drainage system for this project would would. In many instances, improve drainage conditions that are there today. There's just essentially sheet flow that's happening across the site. So the project fully complies with all the C-three stormwater requirements. Includes buyer retention and so on to to stop and to slow down stormwater flows. And all of those things ought to address any stormwater concerns that were raised by the residents.
Okay, I think somebody had mentioned about, I don't know, something happened in the past where there was just layers of mud and that sort of thing. So we're taking steps to prevent something like that from occurring again. Is that right?
Maybe I'll turn it over to, I think Michael Stella is here from the engineer's office. But essentially, you know, the the answer is that the the stormwater systems are designed to deal with all of the surface flow. From the project from rainfall and to deal with it adequately and appropriately. And Michael, I don't know if you have more to add on that front.
Necessarily, no. This is Michael from the engineering department. I apologize, my camera is not working tonight. Yeah, the applicant has designed a very sophisticated storm drainage system that will carry water from the hillside down to the. The culvert that feeds into Happy Valley Creek. We've reviewed the details and believe it's adequate. I think the resident who expressed concern lived in a house prior to the construction of the Kalipig Golf Course in Westbridge Lane. And prior to the construction of those facilities, the water used to flow off to the hillside and inundate their lot. But the storm drain system has since been changed and will be further upgraded with this project. And I'm happy to answer any other questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And then in regards to, I think, the well-water, somebody had mentioned. Any negative impact to the existing residents there in terms of their water supply? Any any comment on that?
Again, analysis was done as to effects on on groundwater and concluded the project would not have any impacts in that in that regard.
Okay, thank you. And then in regards to the traffic calming. I know there is, it was in the presentation, but I know that it it seems like there still may be some concerns with existing residents there about. The added traffic. So any study done that showed, I believe it was the speed lumps and all that, that were going to be the traffic calming. Thing, anything, any studies or anything that shows that will be sufficient in addressing the impact?
Yeah, the traffic study looked looked very closely at the project because that was really a common concern that we heard throughout the preliminary review. And obviously in the planning commission study session. And so we asked the traffic engineering team to look very closely at traffic conditions. The 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 fact of the matter is is that there are existing, you know, sort of speeding and so on that happens on those roads. The shoulders are very narrow. There are no provisions for people to sort of take refuge. And people like to go out and walk their dogs and ride their bikes and do things along those, you know, along those rural roads. That really don't have very generous shoulders. So the condition tends to feel unsafe for people and we certainly recognize that concern. But, you know, the project is adding a small increment of additional trips in traffic. And is also bringing both traffic calming improvements as well as, as Jenny outlined. Some pretty significant trail improvements that we think will help to really improve the conditions out there. And provide more options for pedestrians to be separated and 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 distanced from that traffic that exists today.
Great, thank you. And then regarding the compatible architecture that will fit in with the rural character. Will we have discretion? Will the city have discretion on that as to what the design will be going forward to make sure it is compatible? I know with all the laws that are have passed. Do we have that ability to, you know, make sure it does fit in with the rural character of the area?
Yeah, there's a very comprehensive set of design guidance that's been adopted. These are intended to be custom homes. So single-family homes that would go through a a design review process in every case. I believe that the staff, it's at the staff level, Jenny, she's nodding. So we would review each and every home as it came forward, make sure that it was consistent with those with those guidelines. And and those are really designed and written to be to do absolutely that, fit in with the rural character of the Happy Valley area.
Great, thank you. And last question, on the low low-income housing fees, are they in compliance with city policy?
Yes, the affordable housing agreement that's recommended for approval would have the applicant, sorry, the project pay lower income housing fees. For each of the new homes that were built. And then in addition, although it's not technically part of their housing mitigation. The accessory dwelling units would also provide an additional source of more affordable housing for this project as well. So that's a bonus for this particular development.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. That's all the questions I have right now, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Right, council member Narim, questions?
Thank you. I just have one question. On the construction of the Happy Valley Loop. So the. The the project is going to go ahead and construct that and then receive the credits as well as. They will pay eleven percent of the cost or I'm sorry of the fee credits. What happens if the cost of the cost to construct exceeds the credits or the commitments by the applicant? Is the city paying that? And if so, do we have a trail CIP fund that we would we would take that balance out of? How would we do that if if need be?
Yes, so the 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 condition is structured such that the applicant would pay. Up to the value of the fee credits for the improvement and an additional eleven percent if there were costs in excess of that. So I guess there's a scenario where the cost could exceed the eleven percent. And in which case, there would have to be a discussion about where that additional funding would come from, but it would likely be from the transportation CIP.
Okay, so and so there's money there in that reserve.
It'll depend on what projects are approved and authorized to go forward in the balance of those funds. As to what funding is available in the CIP, but that would be considered at the time that the project's constructed and we had those those costs available. I mean, we're quite, we're pretty optimistic that we'll come up with a project within that approximate value of the fee credits. Engineering staff did a rough cost estimate that that came up with a number that was relatively close to the fee credits. Those fee credits will also go up over time as construction costs. So we're hopeful that between that and the extra eleven percent that we will cover a hundred percent of the costs of construction.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That's it for me.
Okay, we only have four of us. Right, I just have just a few, Alan and Jenny Sue. Jenny, thank you very much. You're very detail oriented and it it really shows in your staff report. So thank you. Try about, who is managing the open space on the hill? It says it's going into a land conservation, but is that going to be Tri Valley Conservancy or it hasn't been determined? Do we know?
It hasn't yet been determined, although Tri Valley Conservancy is a likely organization since they manage so much open space. And similar arrangements for the city, but that has not been precisely decided yet.
Okay, and just because people may be watching at home, is this development fully compliant with measure PP and measure QQ? Or hillside protection ordinances?
Yes.
All right, terrific. When we look at accessory dwelling units, this council had made a decision. That eighteen hundred square feet should be the limit for ADUs in order to make them affordable. And I heard discussion about forty percent of the original footprint, but is there a cap in order to be compliant with the general plan? Do we have a maximum size on these ADUs?
Maybe Jenny, you could answer that one if there's a size limit set for the ADUs.
I believe it's one thousand square feet for detached.
One thousand, well, that will definitely be below eighteen hundred square feet. So, okay, a thousand or no. So actually, Vice Mayor Arkin, you'll remember this, was it eight hundred or a thousand? That was our discussion.
I I thought it was eight hundred. I didn't think.
No, not eighteen hundred, eight hundred.
I think there was discussion about possibly going to twelve hundred, but I thought we held steady at eight hundred.
A thousand is the maximum that state law says we have to allow for a two-bedroom ADU. So that's where our ADU ordinance sets it and and that's the same for this project as well.
Okay, all right, okay. And we had originally talked against ADU second floor if they're being incorporated into an existing neighborhood. But since this is a new neighborhood, we're in a different situation on that. I noticed on the maps there was existing trails on the top of that hillside. Are those trails going to be retained or are they part of this land conservancy?
There's no public trails currently that run across the Spatorno project. So any trails you're seeing are probably just ranch roads or, you know, cattle trails that have been created over time. So, you know, yeah, no, no trails will be modified or added to the upper hillside as part of this proposal project.
All right, the lower flat area sounds good. And my last is this question that was asked a little bit, but I never got a clean answer that I was comfortable with. Traffic calming, is it speed humps? Is it bumpy rolled concrete that's patterned? How are we really slowing people down, coming especially off that golf course hill?
I'll 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 start. Maybe Mike can 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 pitch in. You know, I think that right now the condition's written to allow for a range of traffic calming options. With the idea that they be consistent with the rural character of the area. Not all traffic calming solutions are appropriate for all for a more rural context. Mike, I don't know if you can add to that at all?
Just that our traffic calming program set up in a way that allows the residents to choose what they want. So some residents might like speed lumps, some might prefer radar speed signs. And so the the conditions written so that I get to go and meet with the residents. And so you see a combination now of speed lumps and radar speed signs because that's what they requested. Back in two thousand and six or so, when when I first did the program out there. So we'll meet with them again and ensure that that the things that they want, it could be any of the items that that you listed. It's it's really up to them.
Oh, okay, um, let's stay on that for just a moment. We have a very limited budget for traffic calming, something in the area of fifty thousand a year. Will the traffic calming that you're discussing, the expense be covered by the developer in this PUD? Or is this going to be city funded?
I believe the traffic calming improvements are intended to be developer constructed. With with the project. Jenny, do you have more detail on that?
I'm looking at the condition where how the condition number one hundred twenty is like the second to the last and.
Yeah, it it says that they'll install it as part of the subdivision improvement, subject to review of approval by me. So, yeah, it's there. It's theirs to construct.
Theirs to construct and you're going to be in review to make sure that it fits that Happy Valley area.
Yes.
Right, speed humps are not usually considered common in high-end developments, are they?
They're in they're in all the best developments.
Well, if you have a choice, you kind of want something that's a little a little fancier, but okay.
They have speed lumps out there already, so.
They do. All along that beautiful road, that's for sure. Okay, thank you. All right, I don't see any more questions by council. Oh, yes, council member Tessa?
Sorry, um, two quick, quick things. One that was brought up when a question from. Vice Mayor Arkin, I I may be confusing this. I could have sworn I saw in here that the design review was not fitting in with rural plans. But was more, I thought it said even like a Tudor style, but I can't find it right now, so I could be wrong. So could you just clarify that?
We keyed the design guidance off of the Happy Valley specific plan, which includes a number of parameters. And guidance on this with character of development out there. We also looked at some of the nearby subdivisions around the golf course and elsewhere. As to also take some cues as to the sorts of architectural styles that have been built. And that have have seemed to work relatively well in Happy Valley. So Jenny, I don't know if you can provide a bit more detail on the on the styles and how those were selected.
Um, the style selected indeed that including one of those is English Tudor and the style and the French country. So indeed, it will have a little bit higher picture. But these styles, you could see, I believe. On Sycamore Road, the green buyer homes, those are larger homes in the PUD A zoning district. Some of those carries that feature. So therefore, when the applicant proposed the test, so it's in the vicinity. And we found that we'd be able to add that as a feature to the Happy Valley area. But the majority of the homes, the style proposed in the design guideline, it is more of the farmhouse. Or California bungalow style. So that is more typically and also the Spanish one. So we thought if we have some choice for the homeowners and the design comes right, all the elements comes up. Together with with a right fitting and it will add a lot of a style to the area. So we don't end up with a development in the Happy Valley area. You end up with a cookie cutter kind of style. We do want it to bring a variety to, in a way, dressed up this rural character area. But also fitting in and that that's what the intent behind this whole design.
Okay, so these homes are going to be rather grand, French country and Tudor, English Tudor. It is not going to be farm-style rural. That may be an option that is there, but.
Yeah, we have.
Certainly, these are going to be very grand estates.
We do have a variety of those and then we also limit the square footage. Because the lot is one acre, we cannot say you could do. It it it, so we limited the square footage and the percentage. So the house, in a way, we control the massing and the bulk, so it's not overwhelming. And it's still nest in into the valley area. So that was the whole idea.
And I I'm not, I I just wanted clarification because I didn't, when Vice Mayor Arken asked, I didn't think the that. Really, the description of what this neighborhood is going to look like really was portrayed. Because it it is going to be, they are going to be grand estates. What you said, they're going to be limited in square footage. I don't remember seeing that. What is that square footage?
It is in the design guideline. In the FER. It was allowed for twenty percent.
Twenty percent, so it isn't the specific square footage, it's a percentage. Okay, thank you. Last question that I had fully. Last question that I had fully intended and I I missed, so I apologize circling back. Could someone please just that there is a earthquake fault line and that when I read, I it didn't give me a sense of comfort that there was going to be a requirement, there is one piece of the property that will not be built on and that there will be, gosh, can't find it again. But it was a pretty small setback of how many feet to any home. Can someone just explain how the fault line factors in on this?
So there is there is a fault line on this on this property. The the development standards include a setback from that from that fault line. And that setback is based on a professional engineer's recommendation about about what the appropriate mitigation distance is to avoid exposing any of those homes adjacent to the fault line to 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 undue risk. So in these sorts of circumstances, we do rely on our professional engineering consultants and others to provide that advice about appropriate setbacks to provide the safeguards.
And what is that setback?
Oh, I.
It's 50 feet. Yeah, it is 50 feet. Yeah, also to add on to what Alan has said, the project also require the the scar of the the jail tech area to be repaired through this project. So when the subdivision is a put in and everything is is on the solid.
I mean, and beyond the setback, of course, you know, all of the homes would have to be designed to appropriate seismic standards as well. So that might include special foundation design or other measures again to mitigate those those risks that we see both related to this fault and in California in general.
Okay, all right, well, that that was a good, I enlightened. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we had a chance to ask, go ahead and take down your hand if you don't mind. If you haven't, if you've already asked your question. We're going to, before I open up the public hearing, we'll go over to the to the property owners and the representatives. Welcome, Mr. Enderbitson. And welcomes, I'm going to say this right, Spatorno family, John and Mary Ann, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Appreciate the opportunity and certainly want to thank all your staff for being so thorough. My name is Marty Enderbitson and I'm assisting the Spatorno family and navigating your land use entitlement process. With me tonight and representing the family is Laverne Spatorno, the matriarch of the family. John Spatorno will be making the presentation. He's joined this evening also with his sister Mary Ann. And there are other members of the family who are watching with great interest, obviously. The project architect Kirk Myers is available and I will be available to answer questions after John makes his presentation. But just before he does that, I want to be a little more thankful to your staff. Jenny Sue is incredibly thorough and detailed and her report doesn't leave much for us to comment on. She's talked already about consistency with the general plan and the Happy Valley specific plan. But with her guidance and the guidance of the rest of your senior staff, we were able to make good presentations to your various commissions and get here with unanimous recommendations, which we're very thankful for. And so with that, I really think that thoughtful questions that you and the rest of the council had really anticipated the comments that I was planning to make. So I'm going to introduce John and let him make his presentation. This is really their project and their vision. And I think John can answer any of the design and other questions that you have. So with that, I'll turn it over to John.
Hey, Marty. Mayor Brown, city council members, staff, neighbors and community members participating virtually. Thank you for considering a planned unit development for this Spatorno flat. So much work has gone into this plan by the planning commission, city staff, consultants and the community to be able to come before you tonight. Since adoption of the Happy Valley specific plan in 1998, this Spatorno family has partnered with many prominent developers for when we're unable to get the entitlements. Using our knowledge, our history and the love of the land, we decided to apply for the entitlements ourselves. Meeting with city officials, we learned that if we were able to come up with a quality design that was in conformance with the city's general and specific plans, that the process could be expedited. With the expedited process, time was required to do a thorough environmental checklist in on all the previous environmental work, including updated traffic analysis and species habitat studies. Also necessary were new engineering landscape and design drawings along with a set of development guidelines to describe in detail our vision. A special thank you for many, many virtual meetings and email communications that occurred with city staff and our consultants. Tonight, we are asking the council to recognize all the work that has gone into this proposal, support the staff findings and adopt an ordinance approving the PUD development plan and the vesting subdivision map, subject to the conditions of approval. Adoption of adopt a resolution approving the affordable housing agreement and adopt a resolution authorizing the vacation of that segment of public roadway. Please note that specific architectural floor plans for production house models are not proposed in this application. Actual building designs will be submitted for design review and approval following the recording of the planned unit development and vest tentative map. Following our three points that drove the plan you see before you tonight. COVID with all its variants has changed the lifestyle for many of us. The larger lots proposed provide for separation and provide ample space for outdoor activities while working with the privacy of the home office. The plan also provides each lot with direct access to trails and the rural countryside of Happy Valley. City, the Bay Area and the state as a whole are suffering from extreme shortage. Although this project represents a minuscule percentage of Pleasanton's housing stock, this infill project within two miles of downtown, adjacent to the already developed Kalipe Golf Course, does add to the housing inventory in a manner consistent with the adopted plans for this area. As mentioned in the staff report, an effort is made to aid in the affordability by mandating each site must include an accessory dwelling unit in addition to paying the full in lieu of affordable housing fee currently estimated in excess of $1 million. Due to the desirability, great location and current robust real estate market here in Pleasanton, this Spatorno family believes this is the right time to move forward with this project. To reiterate, the proposed PUD follows a specific plan for designated 22 rural density, medium, minimum one acre lots on the 33 acre flat. Other features include almost four acres of open space, three of those along Alice Dale Street, one and a half miles of public trails, sidewalks and a third mile Alice Dale Drainage and Shoulder Enhancement Project. Well, as an efficient meandering street design to emulate the rural quality of the area. Many of the lots are designed to share driveways and all will have onsite vehicle parking and turnaround space, which are strategies to implemented to reduce conflicts on the street. As part of the stewardship of the dedicated open space and continued agricultural operations, it was important to maintain direct access through the project to the east hill designated as parcel C. For clarification, the proposed maximum floor area ratio for each lot will not exceed 20% as noted correctly in the staff report and the design guidelines. The 20% FAR limit is below the Happy Valley specific plan, 25% for two story or 40% for one story. Our goal for the sustainable design include the following excerpt from the design guidelines. Intended residential building goal is to design for net zero energy where each home will produce as much energy as consumed. And please refer to the development guidelines for additional sustainability goals. In closing, the proposal is built is to build a planned neighborhood tending towards a way of living that is less consumptive and more regenerative. The development isn't in its entirety seeks a strategy to encourage healthy living, sustainable lifestyles and localized choice for outdoor activities. The goal is to provide for a high quality, single family residential development with the design, location and orientation of each dwelling unit to be in harmony with the physical semi rural features of the land and its surroundings. Along with open space allowances, agricultural cultivation, water conservation, bio retention, natural habitat, walking trails and the historic windmill. The project seeks is seeking to link the existing suburban and semi rural neighborhood with the working ranch as a backdrop. Thank you for considering this project tonight. That concludes my portion of the presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
One question that I can answer, I think in working with the city, I think there'll be some natural additional calming brought on by when we create our two intersections, the connection to our new street. So the corner of Alice Dale, the church and also on Westbridge, there is an opportunity there to create some stop signs as opposed to sweeping curves. So that might change the traffic patterns to some extent. I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Sure. All right, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Spatorno? Nope. All right. Well, John, you did a terrific job covering. We saw and it was noted earlier that you had a request for solar hot water heaters. Is that part of the concept that you have about protecting nature and then living on the energy of the building?
So yes, there's a whole list of sustainability guidelines and options. With solar hot water heaters may or may not be the latest technology that's the most sustainable. There's, you know, as you know, the Insta hot water heaters that are directly hooked to the PV systems for electrical generation are seemingly less more expensive installed, but seemingly more efficient and less maintenance over the long haul. So. But yeah, potential for pool solar is out there as well. We really believe that these houses should generate as much electricity as they or as much energy as they consume. And there are numerous strategies to do that. So thank you for that question. We tried to be out in front of the of the as was discussed earlier, the cap 2.0.
Right, well, we appreciate that. Welcome, Laverne, and welcome, Mary Ann. I have one question before I open it up to the public. Two questions, parking along Spatorno Drive. I noticed it's generous parking, three and four spots onsite plus one for the ADUs. Is, will there be public parking on Spatorno Drive? Let's say somebody throws a party and they need some additional parking, Ellen or Jenny?
Jenny, can you answer that question?
Yes, the street width allows for parking on one side of the street. But as far as I understand, the proposal coming in and John has indicated they don't want to. They propose no street parking, so every all the parking will be onsite.
Okay, well, hopefully the HOA will have a parking, a small parking lot that if a large gathering should occur, then people can park there. And then fire risk here near dry grasses over in the hills. Is there any consideration for the elevation or designs and materials? I noticed up in the clipping golf course, there's lots of houses that are stucco and stone and of course tile roofs to make sure they're safe from fire safety. Yet some of the craftsman style homes that are being offered may be a little bit higher risk. Was there any concern for that or would that be reviewed when projects come forward, Jenny?
Material wise, it will be reviewed together and with and also, you know, it's a collective by staff building and a fire as well. So it will be all part of it and sprinklers system, et cetera. Yes.
Great, all right, thank you. Yes, John, did you have something?
I just wanted to add that because of the, well, a couple of things, we hope to continue grazing the land behind there so that the grass fire risk will be reduced. There is the intention to, we need to collect the drainage on the backside or the east side of the property against the hill as well as repair the the slide that was the existing ancient slide that's there. And within that setback that was discussed from the seismic fault that's over there. The idea is that there'll be a maintenance road along there that we've talked to engineering and fire about allowing trucks to get immediate access to the backside of that property. As you know, we experienced the fire up by the water tank this last summer up behind the Lund Ranch. And so we are concerned as well. And then in the design guidelines, there's a list of fire resistant materials and sprinklers required. So in the latest fire requirements, so even if it is a Tudorish style house, there won't be wood shingles, so.
Okay, good, 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 good. And since you have the floor, you do you suspect you'll be working with Tri Valley Conservancy as a as somebody to maintain the land in perpetuity for open space? Or are you going to make that decision later?
We hit, we were trying to get through the steps of the see where the entitlements landed. But yes, I think the idea will be to try to work. Because to me habitat is a continuation. So what's going on at Kalipe and what's going to happen in Diamond Canyon and all of that seems to be important to connect the environmental habitat. So we'd like to work with the city and with, you know, as well as the as we have the infrastructure for the cattle ranching that maybe there can be some combination of grazing and and public connections that, you know, in the future, I know their master plan is talking about how we trail master plan, how we can connect Diamond Canyon with Kalipe. So all those things are on the table. We haven't fully vetted them out yet, but our intention is get through this process and then that's our next step. And Marty, you might have some more information add to that as well.
I think you hit it pretty well, John, but Mayor Brown, the the discussion we've had with the city attorney's office and the planning staff is that we would put together the conservation easement following what we hope will be the approval of this project. And to pick up on John's point, one of the things that we would like to insert into conservation easement is the ability for this Spatorno family to be involved in the ongoing maintenance with the agricultural interests of the property. They've been a great stewards of the land for 154 years. We think they'd probably do a pretty good job for the rest of at least our lifetimes and on into the future.
There you go, longer than the city of Pleasanton has been a city. All right, thank you. All right, thank you both, everyone, very much. We're going to open the public hearing and see if anyone from the public would like to express their thoughts on this project. Jocelyn, do we have anybody that would like to speak?
Yes, our first speaker is Robin Boggs, followed by Deborah Insel.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, hi, welcome to our council meeting.
Thank you all so much. I thank you all, the mayor, vice mayor's staff and council members. And also I respect the Sporhtanos for the project. I live on Sycamore. I'm a registered nurse and my priority is the safety of my community. And I can tell you as are the homeowners join together and discuss it. Just two days ago, we were on the side of the road and we had to jump off into a neighbor's driveway by a speeding car that was turning and almost lost control. This is a daily situation in our community. And so I do ask the council to reflect on the city of Pleasanton pedestrian and bicycle master plan that relates to the policies necessary to protect our city. It is vital. I mean, we we can't even walk 20 feet without jumping into a driveway. When you get the Pleasanton garbage service on there on our road, when you get deliveries to the golf course, you get golfers from early AM to late PM speeding. I I've sent Jenny Sue a little sample of videos that I took. I'm not a professional video person, but I'd like the council to review those. And you'll actually feel what it what it's like to walk on our city roads out here with these trap with these speeding cars. It's very. with these trap, with these speeding cars. It's very dangerous. So I do ask the City of Pleasanton to please consider ensuring safety measures. And I've got to reflect to Mr. Tassano, the speed bumps out here are useless. They're so low in profile. I would really like to see some height in those speed bumps and some stop signs or anything to help our community because we're really struggling out here with speeders. And I've even went to the golf course myself and asked them if they would hand out flyers to ask offers to please respect communities. I mean, I've done a lot on my own. So I think now as a community, we need Pleasanton to help us step up safety measures out here. And I've given Jenny Sue my phone number. There's many of us that would like to walk with you all on our community streets out here and let you experience what it's like to be out here in the morning between seven and nine or five and seven PM in the evening. It is sometimes very, very dangerous. So thank you all. Thank you for considering our safety. I think it's vital out here. I think it's a beautiful project. We just need more safety on our roads. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. All right, our next speaker?
Next speaker is Deborah Insel, followed by Steve Mix.
Hello.
Hi, welcome to our city council meeting.
Thank you. I would like to echo what Robin is saying and, but also say thank you to the Spatornos and this, the planning commission and the, um, the planning staff who have worked so hard to prepare the path along Alisal. Because I think that will be very helpful in protecting pedestrians who are walking dogs, grandchildren, pushing strollers, um, to give us that extra space along the roads. We don't have to walk in the road. So I really appreciate that everybody has worked together to, um, make this path a reality. And I hope that the city council, um, will approve the plan and thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for calling in. Uh, Mary Ann, you have your hand raised and at the, after we do the public, then I'm going to come back to you. So that's the chance for you as the applicant to do a wrap up. So if you're watching. Okay. Thanks. Next speaker?
Steve Mix, followed by Dave Muller.
Hi, I hope you can hear me.
We sure can. Welcome to our Pleasanton City Council meeting.
Well, thank you. Uh, just as Robin and Deb just said, um, I'm in support of the plan. I think this Spatornos and the planning commission have done a very nice job in putting this all together. But with that same message, it is a concern with the neighborhood and traffic. Um, one of the things that I'm concerned with, we're right next door to the, uh, to the development. And, uh, I bought this property. I knew that someday it was going to be developed. But at the same time, there's going to be a lot of trucks. There's going to be a lot of cars. There's going to be a lot of uh, workers that are going to be coming in and out of this project. Possibly take some of those mitigation plans and put them in of, into, into place early. So that, um, the trucks and the workers and the people that are coming into the plan or into the project could possibly slow down. Um, as they said, uh, traffic is very bad around here. The streets are narrow. So I just ask you to possibly take into consideration implementing some of these, um, plans. The, uh, the traffic calming, uh, possibly even work on that Alisal walking path so that we can continue walking while the project is being developed. That walking path, it's not that long. It's not that big of a project. Possibly have the city get involved and do an engineering development of that plan and get it approved. And we, the, um, community around here would love to be involved. You know, get us involved and make sure that we can help you guys put in a nice walking path along Alisal that will protect us while the development is being done. Uh, thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you. Um, and I, I, maybe our chief of police is listening. It sounds like we've got some speeders out there that need to slow down. Be keep our residents safe, that's for sure. All right. Our next speaker, please.
Dave Muller, followed by Becky Dennis.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Did you guys hear me? Okay?
Absolutely. Welcome to our council meeting.
Great. Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Vice Mayor, council members, city management. My name is Dave Muller. I'm a 25 year resident of Pleasanton and I did want to express my, uh, support for the, the project. Um, as others have mentioned, I think a very well thought out and a long project. I, I think when I first came back here from the East Coast with my wife, learned about what was going on and really liked to visit the area and see, see what was, uh, what was, um, transpiring and really, really just always enjoyed, uh, going out there. So I've been staying close to the project and, uh, got to hear the planning commission's uh, presentation last time and thought of again, really well done by the planning commission. Hats off to them. But, um, uh, essentially my, uh, my wife and I have been fortunate to have and raise our family here. Great, uh, great city, obviously with all the, the schools and the facilities, et cetera. And it's my, my hat off to the, the city's current and previous administrators. You guys have done a great job of keeping Pleasanton. I would say truly the jewel of the East Bay. So thank you. And it's a tough job. You have to, you know, keeping the quaintness of the small town, but also, you know, managing the, uh, staying current, driving the economic vitality and general growth requirements, um, especially around housing. Um, in fact, I was, I was a board member on, for Sunflower Hill, uh, for the past eight years. And I witnessed firsthand that push and pull of development. And I really did learn how the city and our elected officials, um, some of their, are serving today. Thank you. Can put together a plan that benefits many. And it worked out really well to really provide housing for 30 adults with developmental disabilities. So, um, again, I know a tough job and you're getting the guys are doing a great job. Um, in terms of the progress on Happy Valley, um, I do believe the collective team of the landowners and the planning commission have got it right. They really have put together a thoughtful development, planned use proposal that fits well with the general plans and, and our, our town's unique characteristics. And the large lots, um, are great, fewer homes. Uh, it's always nice with the, the general, um, characteristic of that area. I mean, keeping, as John Spatorno mentioned, keeping with the agricultural history of the area, I think is important. You know, it gives us the opportunity to hopefully see some gardens, small vineyards and, and the like that, uh, really would blend in nicely. And I think that the planning for the ADUs is a smart way to further assist on the housing side. So again, I, I think well thought out, the, the walking trails absolutely agree with what everybody has said. I do ride my bike out, uh, in the area two, three times a week. Uh, in between the, the, uh, speed humps, but still it's, uh, it's something that you definitely notice that there needs to be some, uh, augmentation to the sides of the roads, et cetera, to make it safer. And it sounds like you've got a great plan that's in place. So my full support for the, uh, proposal and thank you for the time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Dave. All right. Becky Dennis is our next speaker?
Yes.
Is Becky in the room?
There I am. There I am.
There she is. Welcome.
Took a minute to unmute me. Um, I love this project. So yeah, for this property and, uh, you know, I think it's the result of and the city coming together around climate action ideals. Uh, the thing, the, the property is a very forward looking, even though it has a lot of history in agriculture. I think this is the future face of agriculture where we are going for, uh, uh, climate neutrality. And this project has so much going for it in that area, not only the requirements for solar, but also the ADUs onsite, I think mitigates, uh, affordable housing demand that would otherwise be created. And that also reduces emissions. So I just wanted to weigh in and say congratulations to the Spatornos. And thank you to the Spatornos for bringing this wonderful project to the city. And, uh, thank you to the planning staff and to Megan Campbell, who shepherded our climate action plan through for your approval tonight. Think it's kind of fitting that the two things are on the same agenda. Uh, so that's really all I had to say. It's a special project and, uh, uh, I'm feeling very, uh, happy tonight that you are, that you are doing this work for us. So thank you very much.
We call it Happy Valley. There you go. All right. Thank you. Do you have anyone else want to speak on this agenda item?
Yes, Sean Trigier, followed by Jocelyn C.
Sorry, had to unmute. Uh, my name is Sean. Can you guys hear me?
Absolutely. Welcome, Sean, to our Pleasanton City Council meeting.
Thank you very much. Never been to one of these before. It's very interesting. Um, I'm not quite as enthusiastic about this project as everybody else seems to be, but uh, nonetheless, I hear a lot of, a lot of comments about, um, Alisal and calming the traffic. And that's all good. I'm all happy about that. But what I have not heard is any comments about Happy Valley Road itself or Sycamore Road. Those two roads are the only roads that feed this community. And, and the, uh, this project is basically halfway between them. Happy Valley Road gets a lot of traffic and, uh, with the golf course that once the golf course went in and the, uh, bypass road that didn't get put in, uh, has created a lot of, a lot of golfers, which, you know, that's, they're having fun. But Happy Valley Road is a very small rural road with no space for any kind of sidewalks or anything like that. Um, and it's getting a little bit beaten up from the heavy traffic use. And, and a few other comments that I've heard, uh, if you ride your bicycle or walk, you have to be very aware of cars. Um, so I, I would like to see some, some emphasis put on, uh, on the safety of the roads that actually feed that little, that new, that new project. Um, and then what maintenance would be done. Um, the other thing is from what I heard, the drainage ideas sound pretty good to me. But I am a little bit concerned about the extra water going into that creek. That creek actually runs on through my property. And I already have erosion issues from it. So if there's increased flow in that creek, that would be a concern. And it's probably a concern to many other residents along, along Happy Valley where that, that creek flows through their properties. And then, uh, what kind of timeline is, is we look at? Is this like a two-year, five-year, 10-year project? Anyway, just a few things. Uh, anyways, that's, that's, that's about it. Uh, thank you for listening to me.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Um, I'm going to ask, uh, city manager, Brian Dolan, isn't Happy Valley, uh, at one point goes into county land? It's not City of Pleasanton land anymore?
Yes, I, I think, um, it's only a very short distance. It's in the city. Also, Alisal, uh, is largely in the county. Um, Mike can probably speak to that better than anyone.
So those are Alameda County roads with Alameda County responsibility. But yes, uh, please, Mr. Tassano?
Yeah, both Alisal and Happy Valley are county roads. Happy Valley just recently went through a traffic calming that was done through the county. I think 2018 or so, they have radar speed signs and, and speed lumps. When I, when I did the, uh, traffic calming in 2006 or whenever it was, Happy Valley residents didn't want anything at that time. Uh, it was just, wasn't something that interested them. But the, uh, the, the quality of the roadway would be fully on, on the county. Uh, when we put the golf course in, we, we went in and, and worked with the county. So we ended up paying for the, the traffic calming on Alisal, even though it was a county roadway. That's why you still see the speed lump signs that are speed up signs that say City of Pleasanton on them, even though they're actually in Alameda County.
So they pay their taxes to Alameda County and they should look to Alameda County. But we can do what we can to help as you have done. All right. Thank you. All right. Our next speaker?
Jocelyn C. And then we have a dial-in phone number.
Okay.
Hi, thank you. My name's Joel Holmes. Mayor Brown, council members. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. This project, as you know, has been a long time in the making. Um, I'm calling to support three specific provisions. The first one is the ADUs, which I think is one elegant solution to housing. Affordable housing and then the low income housing fund fee as well. That's very generous to have both of those. And as you know, the planning commission is looking at how we spend, uh, the fee. And perhaps we'll look at some more ways to build affordable housing with those fees. And finally, compliance with CAP 2.0, solar batteries and the trails through the, um, trails master plan. Those are, are huge. So I want to thank staff, all the commissions, and particularly the Spatorno family for this project and bringing these ideas forward. I encourage you to support them as well. Supplying affordable housing is done project by project. And this is a very good example. As a side note, um, John Spatorno, if you happen to be a Pleasanton resident, I don't know if there is an opening on our Environment and Energy Commission, but you'd be a great addition. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And our last caller is on a phone, I understand. Next speaker?
Yes. So i- if you are dialing in from phone number ending in one nine two zero, you may unmute your phone at this time by pressing star six.
Or maybe they aren't interested in speaking. Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, there you are. Yes, we certainly can. Welcome to our Pleasanton City Council meeting.
Hey, thank you. Um, I'm Mike Bailey. I've been following the meeting and the development. Um, I grew up here on Alisal Street with my parents, Pete and Marge Bailey. Um, hello to the staff and the, the board and the Spatono family. You guys have a really nice project there. Um, listening to presentation, I have some quick questions I'd love to, um, just throw at you just for informational. We're on well and septic here on our side. Will, will these folks, these lots be on the city well and sewer? And will they have any effect on our wells? Go ahead.
Go ahead and ask all your questions and then we'll, we'll follow.
Okay. That's perfect. Yeah. Um, was wondering where the water will be channeled out of the project. Currently there's two culverts under Alisal Street, one's at the Dahl Heinz and the other one's, um, in front of the parsonage next to our house. Um, could you say something about the three common lots? Uh, you mentioned, I think, what, two of them are going to be used for? What would the third one be? It sounded like if there's a HOA, then they can, they would have some power to prohibit further ADUs allowed under SB nine. Is that true? Or? So will there be more units here or just the one ADU on each lot? Um, will the bio-retention area look the same as it is now? And also, or will it be upgraded somehow? And finally, um, would, are you anticipating perhaps a three-way stop where Sporhtono Ranch Road intersects Alisal um, by the church there and your big gate to the pasture? Those are all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ellen, would you mind answering any of those questions or Jenny Sue confirming that it is, oh, water? Public water and public sewer is one, um, where the water is channeled ultimately the third common lot? And, uh, is there any ability to limit it to just one? Uh, ADU?
Um, yeah. So the, so the homes will be connected to city water and sewer. They will not be on well and septic. Um, I, I can answer the, where exactly the water discharges from the storm drain system, but that has been thought through as part of the C3, uh, plan. Um, and you know, generally speaking, the, the concept there is you, you get no net loss, no, sorry, no net, no increase in runoff from the project site with design of the storm drain system. So you don't exacerbate or worsen any runoff conditions that might be existing. You control the better typically. The bio-retention area will, will look quite different from what's there today. Uh, it'll be landscaped um, and engineered to handle those storm flows. It requires a detention basin to be constructed that has a particular technology to it. And that will be landscaped as well to, to be attractive. With respect to the SB nine question, um, staff spoke to that in, in our response to a question from council member Testa. And the answer is that the homeowners association could choose to limit additional subdivision or construction of units allowable under SB nine. Um, and those same rules would also limit the number of new ADUs that could be constructed. And those same rules would also limit the number of new ADUs that could be constructed with the project as well.
Great. Thank you. And the three parcels are parcel A, B, and C. Because that, that third parcel is the hillside, so.
Yes. A and B are sort of common area, open space, and then a trail connections. And then the, the third parcel is the open space property, as mentioned.
Thank you. All right, Jocelyn, do we have any other speakers?
Yes, it looks like we have one last hand raised for Erin Sorgle.
Mayor, before we go on to the next speaker, I had clarification on what was just said. Could I ask? So it's not disconnected. Thank you. So Ms. Clark, the question about the ADUs, I didn't feel that that question had been answered, and I'm a little confused because I would believe that, in fact, additional, at least one additional ADU could be added to each lot. Isn't that true? Because an HOA cannot prohibit the ADUs the way it can prohibit SB 9.
The ADU laws and the SB 9 requirements are two separate pieces of law that kind of, they do work together, but they're also separate. So someone would have to propose a product, a project, an SB 9 project that proposed to increase the total number of housing units on the individual property, which if that was prohibited by the homeowners association, I believe, could limit the number of ADUs total. And they would be restricted to only what the cities and state ADU laws allow for, which is one ADU per property.
If they came in through the ADU law, not in through SB 9?
Correct.
No. If it comes in through the ADU law instead of SB 9, the ADU law could not be prohibited by the HOA and would, in fact, allow the two ADUs. Isn't that true? Ministerial?
The ADU has to be accessory to a primary structure. So there's one primary structure, then there can be one ADU. Whether or not there could be a junior ADU, I think is a separate question. And that might be what you're referring to, but that would be interior spaces of, of the home versus a new, a new structure. It's a little bit different.
Okay, you're right. It, you're right. A junior ADU. So yes, it would not be a separate structure. Okay, that, that clarifies, but it would allow for a junior ADU, I think. But yeah, thank you.
Okay. All right. Our last speaker.
Erin Sorgle.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Erin and my husband and I live on Sycamore. We moved here four years ago and were really drawn to the area because of the rural feel and the country aesthetic of Happy Valley. I have to say, I'm not excited about this development. I respect the Spaternos for, they, it's their land and they should be able to have a say in what, what happens with their land. I'm not anti-development at all, but I have young children and I am also concerned about the traffic. If you figure there's going to be two homes on every lot, now it sounds like perhaps more. That's at least three cars probably per lot. That's a lot of traffic for our road. And in addition, I, I just don't think that a housing development of this type fits in with our, with our country feel and our rural aesthetic. I don't think it's in keeping with the area. And it's a shame to lose some of that charm of Pleasanton and the open space and the country feel. So, and then just one question. What, what is the timeline of this project? When do we expect construction to begin if it's approved? Thank you.
Thank you. Is that our last caller?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I'll close the public hearing and I will ask maybe Mr. Spatorno or, I know Mary Ann had her hand up earlier. What is your timeline? What do you, or Mr. Underbits, and any of you, what do you expect your timeline to be? I heard it asked twice.
I'll, I'll start that off, Mayor Brown. As a practical matter, if assuming that we get an approval from the council, it would take us most of the rest of the year to, you know, do final map and construction kinds of things and get those things approved. The very earliest I think anything could happen out there would be next year in the spring. But the likelihood is that as long as it takes to get things done these days, it's probably towards the end of 2023 before we even get out to do grading.
Okay, thank you. All right, John, would you like to do some closing statements? We are, we do have four or five items after this, so if you could be fairly brief, that would be appreciated. But make sure you got the words in that you want.
I think Laverne and Mary Ann also had a couple of short statements if, if that would be.
Perfect. All right, welcome.
I'll go first. Hello, my name is Mary Ann. And I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight and considering our project in front of you. What I wanted to talk about tonight is the importance of the Spatono Ranch legacy. It's a legacy and preservation of the past while embracing the future. As you've seen with this development design, we feature a rural livelihood while continuing to promote land management best practices, sustainability and stewardship that has been entrusted and passed down through the generations of my family. Building a true legacy is not an undefined task. It randomly happens. It's built with intention, provision, strong work ethic and passion for land and animals. It's a story that's created day by day over time that leaves an imprint of a livelihood that will be passed on to others. But we're not done with the longevity of our ranching operations. We are adapting our operations for a sustainable future. With our continued livestock grazing operations, the open space supports wildlife habitat, scenic and other uses for benefit of the public at large. The runoff of a healthy grazing land allows for improved water filtration. It improves the soil, gives a clean source for the animals' vegetation growth and general land management. And then with future advancement in water capture technologies, may be able to provide additional fundamental sustainability objectives. It's through our continued long-lasting relationships with the Pleasanton community. It is our intent, the Spatono Ranch Development and the Conservation Easement are a beacon of beauty and character for us, the neighborhood and the entire city of Pleasanton. Thank you for your time.
Beautifully said. Thank you. Thank you, Mary Ann. Laverne, did you have some comments for us? You're on mute, I think. I think you're on mute there. There you go.
Okay, thank you. I want to thank the council for the opportunity to speak tonight on behalf of our project. I wish my husband Alex could have been here to see how far we've come since 1994, including 28 years and seven-plus developers who walked away. We decided to work directly with the city with the help of our attorney, and it has proven to be very beneficial. Unfortunately, my husband died four years ago, but hopefully what has transpired to the point we're at it this evening, we hope to fulfill his wish. Our family is dedicated to our agricultural work. This year marks the 155th year of continuing ranching since 1867, when Gaston Pierre Spatorno and his brother Jean-Matisse Spatorno founded and established the Spatorno Ranch. Now our adult grandchildren are interested in coming on board to continue the family heritage. Our family has worked very hard to keep within the preferences and parameters of the city staff, city planning commissions' expectations, and hopefully as well with the city council. We have done our best to work with our neighbors' desires, especially in implementing a trail for people to enjoy, among other stipulations and advantages. Tonight, it is our hope that what we present will be accepted and approved. And of course, we will continue to cooperate with whatever suggestions the council may have. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. That applicant, any final statements? Okay. Well, thank you very much. Everybody spoke so well on this project. I'm going to close the hearing and bring it to the council for comments, a motion, questions, anything that you would like. Yes, Vice Mayor Arkin.
Yes. Before a motion, if I could ask a question, since it seemed to be pretty much the common denominator with the public comment about additional traffic calming with speeders, I heard Sycamore Road mentioned as also problematic. Could there be any addressing of any additional traffic calming that could be done? Was it thought of? How practical is it? Anything regarding that? As well as somebody mentioned the trail construction before the development. I don't even know if that's possible, but somebody did ask if that could be done. Could those things be addressed before we go to them?
I'll, I'll maybe take the second question first and then pump the other one over to, to Mike Tassano. So the, the traffic comment, I think it would be difficult to, to guarantee that that could be done because we have no idea at this point what the sequencing of construction is and what's going to make sense for this project. So I would be reluctant to commit the applicant to undertaking those improvements prior to start of construction or, or very early on. Of course, we can strive for it. We can encourage it, but I'm not sure we can require it. And then Mike, maybe you can take the second, the first question about traffic calming on more distant streets.
Yeah, so we, we'll look at, at Sycamore. We, we definitely heard from several Sycamore residents. So I think that's something that we can take on when, when we address Alisal. You know, I think Happy Valley was just recently done. I mean, we'll, we'll, we'll have them come out. You know, and we can listen to their concerns as well. I, you know, it'll be a conversation probably with the county, you know, as we move forward there. So yeah, we, we heard them and, and we want to make sure the residents are happy out there. And so it sounds like that's the one element that we need to, to work on. So, so we'll do our best to meet all their needs.
Yeah, Mike, could you work on speed? I know we have indicators that show speed. That's important. As well as Pleasanton PD needs to monitor an area within the city limits. If we have speeders out there, especially when it's dangerous, they just can't have that. This is, this is Pleasanton. We don't want anyone hurt.
Mayor, the, the chief is listening and watching and he's gotten that message.
Yay, that's what we want. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. All right. Councilmember Narum.
Thank you. I don't know. Was Councilmember Arkin done?
No, I, you know what? I was going to go ahead and I, I agree with, I'm glad Mr. Tassano addressed the traffic thing. I think that does need to be, you know, for children's safety and all that, we need to look at that. But I was just going to go ahead and make the motion that we go ahead and, how do I word it here? Item number 14, approve the planned unit development. Do I need to read the whole thing or if I just say item 14, is that enough?
Jenny Sue, would you put up that recommendations by staff and then take a look at that? If you want to make staff recommendations, there are six recommendations. Thank you. Perfect. If you want to read those off or you wanted to say staff recommendation or you want modifications?
Sure. I will, I will just say, I'll make a motion to approve the six staff recommendations.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And do you want me to go on with comments or?
Sure, go for it.
Okay, so I'm making that motion with, with the added, you know, well, I'm not even going to add it to that because our, Mr. Tassano did say they are going to look at the additional traffic calming, which I think would be important, as well as the trail construction before the development, if that's even something to look at, or if it's practical. But I think, you know, I think this, this project meets our general plan requirements. I think the architecture is going to be compatible with the area, so I'm happy about that. I think the construction of the ADUs is actually a really good thing and a way to address housing options for our residents. So I think that's great, along with the low-income housing fee that will still be contributed to. The trail construction, I know the planning commission highly recommended that, and I completely agree. So I'm glad we're doing that. We've already talked about the traffic calming that's going to be done and hopefully more that will be done. Seems like the water issues were addressed, so that should satisfy the residents with what our city has been mentioning with this project. And the solar requirements for our climate action, I think, is great as well. So overall, I think it's a, it's a good project and happy to see it go forward. And thank you to everybody involved, all our staff, for all your work on it.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Narum.
Thank you. I'm happy to second it. Thank you to the speakers, all the residents. And thank you to this paternal family. I, it's really quite, in a way, an honor to be able to approve this project and help them continue their legacy. You know, it's hard for me to believe it's been almost 25 years since that Happy Valley specific plan was approved. And I, I could think of six different applications prior to tonight. I think Mrs. Paterno mentioned there are actually seven. None of them or all of them were not consistent with the, the specific plan. Many more houses, one in particular looked like cookie cutter homes and anything but semi-rural. So I really think this is a great thing for enclosure to this, to this land. Being consistent with the Happy Valley specific plan, homes on one acre parcels, sustainable, good design, excellent design guidelines. And and they're going to make a nice transition into that open space that is going to be created here. And then in addition to that, we've touched on some of them and I won't mention them, but I think getting all these trails constructed and I, it just seems much more efficient having the project construct the Happy Valley Loop Trail and, and then being creative and giving them fee credits. And, and I think that will go a long ways to some of the concerns that have been mentioned tonight, rightfully so, on the Alisal Road. So I'm, I'm just really happy to second this and, and really bring closure to the family, I think, and into the residents of that area. And now they know what's going to be there and what's not going to be there. So with that, that's my second.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember Testa.
Well, in the interest of time, I won't repeat so much of what's already been said, but it's a lovely project and it will be a lovely neighborhood. So I also really do appreciate the effort that went into bringing something forward that the majority of the neighborhood neighbors really do support. And I really appreciate our traffic engineer has made a commitment to taking a look and seeing what else we can do because clearly that'll make the project in the neighborhood that much better as well. So yeah, it's a nice project.
Absolutely. Beautiful project. And I know, I know the projects will look like Pleasanton as we go further from the core, the center of the city. The houses tend to be more dispersed and less dense. But I also want to thank the Spatono family for, as this wonderful document that's about the history of the property, that discusses the land to create Alisal Street, was gifted by the Spatono family to, for use in Alisal Street. And then their 16 feet of right-of-way was sold for West Bridge Lane. So they've been participating in the area for, for generations with an 1867 project and farm. So it is with great care. You provide a housing project that is sensitive to our environment for our climate action plan. Of course, we're discussing today, but also for the future residents that will live there. So thank you. I think this is a great project. I'm a big supporter of it. And, and let's take a roll call vote and see how we do.
Vice Mayor Arkin?
Aye.
Councilmember Narum?
Aye.
Councilmember Testa?
Aye.
Mayor Brown?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Congratulations. That's a, a nice project coming forward. Okay, folks.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And we're going to bring back our councilmember Ball to this night, 16. And we had a meeting before this meeting. So we've been meeting for three hours. Do we need a few minute break? I see some head nods. Let's keep it as brief as we can. We're going to try to hold it to three minutes. And TV 30 will be right back. Good evening and welcome to the continuation of the Pleasanton City Council meeting here on February 15. So we are on to our next agenda item. And that is to approve a framework and estimated expenditures for Weekend on Main Closure Program in downtown Pleasanton. Could we have a staff report, please?
Certainly. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Pamela Ott, Acting Assistant City Manager, and really pleased to be here with you this evening to talk about Weekend on Main in 2022 and perhaps beyond. So I will go ahead and share my screen and get started with this discussion. There we go. So as the council and in the community who are watching knows, Weekend on Main Street Closure really was started as a way to close down Main Street to vehicular traffic every weekend. As we wanted to provide outdoor space for merchants to expand their operations and provide some relief during COVID. You all will well remember that early in the stages of COVID, there were a lot of limitations on many of our business types. And so this was an opportunity to say we had some space that might be useful to those businesses that had limited indoor capacity. And so this idea that we wanted to provide additional outdoor space. But we also wanted to draw people downtown and have this expanded pedestrian environment with space for gathering while they could still maintain social distancing. And that's really the genesis of the Weekend on Main Street Closure Program. And for this program, the city manages the application. So we do ask businesses who want to participate to apply with us, a very simple one page application. We manage that. And then the city also manages the street closures and the traffic control around each of the weekend. So just a brief recap. So in 2020, the Weekend on Main Street Closure Program was based on a PDA recommendation. And it ran through June 19th through November 1st. It was actually initially thought to be only eight weekends long. And the city council extended it and through November 1st of that year in 2020. So it went for a full 20 weekends. And that was every weekend from Friday evening through Sunday evening. And it involved the closure of Main Street from Delvaux Way or more, excuse me, Delvaux Parkway, or more appropriately, just south of the Main Street Bridge to south of Burnell, excuse me, south of Old Burnell Avenue, almost all the way to Burnell Avenue and portions of Neil Street and then East Division Streets. And the reason I really want to call out the footprint of this particular street closure is it's different than what we had done in the past. We had traditionally stopped at that Ray St. John intersection and not included the north end of that block from that intersection up to the bridge. And we didn't always go all the way to Burnell Avenue as well. And it was really important when we created this footprint for this program that we wanted to make sure that all the businesses on Main Street and any side streets that could accommodate it were able to participate because we wanted it to be as as open and accessible as possible for all of our downtown merchants. In 2021, we brought back the street closure again, still you know, trying to manage our businesses and help support them through all of the ups and downs of COVID. And based on the PDA's recommendation for 2021, the season ran from April 30th through Labor Day weekend. So that was 18 weekends in 2021. Again, every single weekend, same timing, Friday evening through Sunday evening and same footprint again in 2021. Toward the end of 2021, in August, the council had a discussion and directed staff to collaborate with the PDA to develop a program for what Weekend on Main might look like for the future. Right, we we know that initially we were responding to COVID. But how could this event that had really become so very much appreciated by our community and enjoyed by residents and visitors alike? How could we think about that as a longer term experience in downtown? And so the council asked staff to go talk to PDA, work with PDA and a whole lot of of our stakeholders and balance those various interests of the downtown merchants and of the community. And so in the latter half of 2021, city and PDA staff coordinated a whole bunch of stakeholder inputs. And that stakeholder input came from some planned sessions. It came from a lot of organic input that we got. And we'll walk through all of that this evening so that I can fully share with you the council as you have your discussion, what all the comments were that we heard. And we did have an advisory group that was set up. And that advisory group was comprised of a PDA restaurateur, a PDA retailer, a PDA service business, a downtown resident, and then a non downtown resident as well. Then we also met separately with the PDA retailers and with PDA restaurateurs. And as the council certainly knows, the retailers and the restaurateurs have been the most engaged in talking with us about Weekend on Main over the last two years and into early 2022, as it seems to be, you know, most important and most impactful to their types of businesses. Not discounting any of the other downtown merchants who feel strongly about this, but this is who stays mostly engaged with us in these conversations. So after several meetings, the 2022 Weekend on Main input started with the advisory group that I mentioned. And that advisory group had several meetings and ended on a preferred framework to host Weekend on Main once a month. They wanted to bring it back Friday afternoon through Sunday evening, just as we had before. May through October was their recommendation. The similar footprint to what we had used before from the Main Street Bridge to south of Old Burnell Avenue. I do want to point out to the council that we started the conversation with what do we want Weekend on Main to look like? Is it every weekend? Is it once a month? Is it some other frequency of meeting times or street closure times? And so we really ran the gamut. We talked about different footprints. We talked about would it be just Saturdays? Would it be Friday and Saturdays only? So we really tried to take into account all the considerations of for for this group to noodle through. And so ultimately, what I am sharing with you this evening is where they landed, as I said. One important point that I want to to call out is they felt that once a month was an appropriate timeframe, because there there was some discussion that we had around potentially the erosion or losing the specialness of an event if it happens so frequently. Right? And so they felt like once a month was an opportunity to keep it fresh and to continue deliver programming, which you see as a bullet here on the slide that you're seeing with. And the idea of programming is that during Saturday potentially and during Sunday, much of the time, there is not activity on Main Street. And it's not dining times at lunchtime or at dinnertime. And so you have these periods during the day where the street isn't very active. And so the idea of programming the street during these times really then allows allows patrons to come down. It allows us to draw people to the downtown. And then it also allows the retail establishments to say, we know what's going to happen during Weekend on Main this weekend. And then we can help lean in and support and create activities that allow the retailers to really engage in the in the Weekend on Main Street Closure, much as the restaurants have as well. Because as you remember, many of the retailers do not bring their footprint or their storefronts outside of their enclosed space, right? They don't take advantage of the street quite as much as the restaurants do. But maybe there's an opportunity if they need, there was some really specific programming that they could participate in. Moving on to the retailers input. And this I will share with you is what we heard from the retailers generally. I do want to acknowledge that there is a whole range of perspectives depending on what somebody's particular business is and how they choose to operate that business or how they feel that they've been impacted by the street closures. So what we generally heard from the retailers and most of them was that they have been negatively impacted by Weekend on Main. But at the same time, they do recognize and understand the popularity of Weekend on Main. So it was not the perspective of any other retailers that necessarily necessarily would go away in its entirety. They just felt like they wanted to have a lesser frequency of Weekend on Main events. I will also offer too, that there are some retailers that have really expressed some support for Weekend on Main because they like it and they think it brings business. So again, it's just really specific to that that kind of business and what they think that they get out of it. But largely, the retail voice was just not so often as every single week. So you see, the retailers came out and shared in our conversations with city staff and PDA that they supported a frequency of once a month, Friday afternoon through Sunday evening, same as we had before. May through October was their preferred timeframe. Again, same footprint. And then that, as I said earlier, that programming to activate the streets. They very clearly did not support November and December street closures. They felt it was right in the middle of the holiday season when they were doing everything that they could and needed all the streets open and access to their storefronts as available as possible. Sharing with you now the restaurateurs input when we spoke to them directly. Many of the restaurateurs have been positively impacted by Weekend on Main. And they value Weekend on Main to enliven downtown during the pandemic. And then they see that as an opportunity to do so after after the pandemic. If not ends, at least we're able to get back to some sort of normalcy and how we're we're putting on events and enjoying our community. So the restaurateurs indicated that they had support, that they thought that balance meant closing the street twice a month. That was their their preference. Many of them thought every weekend was ideal for them, but they did think that twice a month they could offer support for as a group. And then Friday afternoon through Sunday evening, same timeframe we've we've had for the last two years. But they did ask specifically that we extend the the timing on Sunday night from an eight o'clock opening of the street to a 9:00 PM opening of the street. They felt that that would give them an opportunity to have one last dinner seating at seven or 7:30 and then not rush their patrons through that seating. So that's certainly something that in talking to to retailers and and the restaurateurs and and my staff colleagues and everyone that's going to help put this program together, we certainly think that that is an appropriate ask and we can incorporate that into our proposed framework. The restaurateurs also asked for my May through December timeframe, regardless of how many times the street closure happened during a month. That was really important to them. They thought that they knew weather might be a little iffy, but they thought that there was still a lot of interest in people coming downtown and enjoying downtown and celebrating downtown. And so they wanted to ask for May through through December, which is what we've brought to you this evening. Again, same same footprint from essentially south of the bridge to just south of Old Burnell Avenue. And then again, support for programming, anything that would help activate the street and bring vibrancy and people to downtown. Certainly, the council knows, and I'll just share again, that we received very positive feedback from our residents and our visitors for the 2020 and 21 Weekend on Main Street closures. They appreciated that downtown and Main Street felt very pedestrian oriented. Any number of stories that we've heard about people riding their bike or letting their kid scooter up and down the street, right? So love the pedestrian orientation. They really appreciated the expanded outdoor dining. And you all, you know, I should pause for a minute and just say that, you know, Weekend on Main and the ability for these merchants not to just use the later program that we created, park pop ups and parklets, but really to expand to the entirety and take out much of the street really gave them an opportunity to serve a lot more patrons and show off all of our great restaurants in Pleasanton. And I think many of our residents and visitors really liked that and liked that alfresco dining. And then just a general enjoyment of downtown. And so we know that many of our community feel really positive about Weekend on Main. But we also did get some comments too. There were several comments that I received, and I know others did as well, about access to downtown businesses. Some residents said it was really hard if they couldn't park there, they couldn't carry items back to their their car. They just thought it was hard to navigate around the 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 outside edges of Main Street to get to where they wanted to be. So there were some concerns that residents expressed about access and then parking availability as well. So I wanted to add those to the mix also. And then some additional considerations I'll I'll offer as well. And these are carryovers from 2020 and 21. But I think they're important just to cover again, as we're having a holistic conversation about Weekend on Main, traffic and circulation. We are still starting, we are still seeing increased commute and personal travel. We know that everybody is not staying home and working from home these days. And you know, that traffic circulation is picking back up. So there's some considerations there as we think about traffic circulation in and around downtown when all of Main Street is closed, involving some rerouting of deliveries. And we heard some concerns on our merchants part about that. Impact to downtown residents. Many of you know that we have a number of pockets of residents who live in the downtown proper and not just on the streets that abut downtown, but literally right off of Main Street. Some of those residents do have ingress and egress out of backways or out of side streets so that they can come and go to their residence. Other residents have only access from Main Street. And I heard from a number of those, particularly last year, how they were just impeded from being at their residence and getting in and out every single weekend for 18 weekends. And it just really created some frustration for those residents who particularly live downtown. And then impact to downtown business. And a repeat of of conversations we've had already, inconvenience for customers and vendors and limited access to parking and delivery services. So with all of those inputs and it's a lot to to consider, the PDA board met on a couple occasions to decide what their recommendation to the city was going to be. So the PDA's recommendation for 2022 is to bring back Weekend on Main once per month on the first weekend of every month, Friday afternoon through Sunday evening, May through December. Same footprint, Main Street Bridge to South of Old Burnell Avenue. And then PDA would be responsible for creating activities and delivering activities on Saturday to activate Main Street to give folks another reason to come downtown and enjoy downtown. PDA will also begin to incorporate Weekend on Main into their annual downtown programming. So it's something that we will look forward to going forward in future years. And then listening to the conversation from the retailers and the restaurateurs, really working with both of those groups to, and not just those, but other merchants as well, to cross promote and work with them on how they can support each other and and share ideas and and really help all boats rise here with a focus on shopping local. And so PDA thinks there's a really unique role for them to play in 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 bringing those merchants together. And one of the considerations that PDA is also thinking about is concerts in the park. We brought those back, PDA did last year on Sunday afternoon. And I think people were very appreciative of having a short concert series comes comeback for the summer. But what PDA has heard is that our residents really want their beloved Friday night concerts in the park back. They they want to see those return. And so PDA is proposing that they would be able to do this on Friday nights during non-street weekend closures. And I do want to share on behalf of the Downtown Association that this was a really rough two years for them as well, not being able to put on events, build revenues. They've cut back on some of their staffing. And so there is a decided consideration on the part of PDA and understanding what their capacity to deliver on all of these things that they said that they want to bring to downtown. And so I know in talking to their leadership that that once a month recommendation that they made is, you know, both based on listening to their constituents, but also listening and knowing their organization and what they have, the ability to deliver really successfully for to 2022. We've also shared with the council on in our past discussions that we know that there are some direct expenses that come with closing the street. Right? Because we have to close not just the north and south end of Main Streets, but we have to close many of our side streets as well. And we have to do it in a way and using barricades that ensure the safety of all the residents and all the visitors who are downtown. And so that's why and you see those really significantly large water. And so that's why and you see those really significantly large water barriers that we use to close the street. Those are really intended to be as safe as possible for people who are downtown as opposed to let's say an A-frame, right? That we know a vehicle could potentially get through. So if you think about those expenses, and this is really where they are primarily focused is really on creating the appropriate safe and the street closure that we want to create. So we have in, for the last two years in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, we used a vendor to help us close the street every single weekend. And so going back to that same vendor, doing our research and actually getting quotes from a number of vendors, but from the same vendor that we used who is willing to participate with us again, getting some estimated expenses for the council. To close the street once a month from May through October is approximately a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. So you can see as you look on the slide, that's a little over a hundred thousand dollars for barricade placement and removal. And about fourteen thousand dollars in city staff overtime over the course of the weekend. I mean, one of the factors in the cost estimate that we have here that's different than yours past is when we did the closures in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, because they were every single weekend. We did not remove the water barriers from downtown. What you saw was us put them into place for the weekend street closure. And then you saw some, some back out of the way and you saw them tucked right into a parking space or on a side street during the entirety of the season, right? Because if you're going to do it every single weekend, it doesn't make sense to bring them in, take them out and take them out as opposed to this framework where if you're going to do it once a month, we think that it is more appropriate that you would bring them in for the weekend street closure. And then when the street closure is over, you would remove them. So they're not sitting downtown, taking up parking spaces or just occupying space on a side street for the better part of twenty-eight days or so. And so I just wanted to, to let you know that that was one factor in the cost here. So as I mentioned, about a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars for a May through October season. And then about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for a May through December season. Again, most of that money is for the, the, the pickup, the drop off, the, the filling, the placement of those barricades to make sure that the street stays closed appropriately. We did in the agenda report, offer an alternative and that alternative is staff only. We would not hire an outside vendor. And you can see by looking at the cost estimates on your screen, that that is a much less expensive option for us for a May through October series that looks like about fifty thousand dollars. And then from a May through December series, that looks like approximately sixty-four thousand dollars. But again, that's based on one time per month. And I did want to point out that in working with our staff in the operations services department, because that's who largely would be doing the setup and the takedown, that we really at this point can only commit and think it's only feasible that if we were going to use staff to do this, that would be the once a month frequency. If we wanted to look potentially at more than once a month, we would go back to looking at that, that vendor plus staff model, right? With the other expenses that I noted there. Additionally, one other consideration that we're bringing forward to the council this evening. And this goes back to my comments a few minutes ago about the, the Pleasanton Downtown Association and how it spared through COVID. Again, not being able to hold many, if any, events over the last two years has really significantly reduced the revenues to the PDA. And so the council is being asked this evening as part of this discussion to consider a city sponsorship for this year's Weekend on Main series. That sponsorship we are suggesting is a hundred thousand dollars in sponsorship. That does help the PDA have enough resources, staffing and otherwise to be able to deliver on all the things they want to deliver for this year's Weekend on Main season. And then that hundred thousand dollar sponsorship, if the council were inclined to, to consider that would be allocated from the three million dollar business support fund that the council has already allocated. Someone will ask me about how much is left in that fund. And I'll just let you know that of the original three million, we've given out one point four million approximately in loans to our businesses who went through our loan program. And the council also recently allocated about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the grant program for parklets, which leaves about one point three five million in that, in that fund. So there is sufficient funding, certainly if the council wanted to consider the hundred thousand dollars to the PDA. And then potentially leaves room for some future allocations by the council as well. All of this discussion leads to staff's recommendation as presented in the agenda report. And so we are recommending that for twenty twenty-two that the frequency of Weekend on Main be once a month. And again, the first weekend of the month is recommended by PDA, Friday afternoon to Sunday evening. May through October is staff's recommendation. We do understand why PDA recommended May through December. But we felt that with our work with the advisory group and hearing all of the inputs that we thought May through October was an appropriate timeframe to recommend as the first framework. But also it was clear, if you read the staff report and I'll share with you now, council can certainly consider adding November and December. If they, they wanted to do that and extend the season in support of some of the, the other inputs and, and and ideas from our merchant groups. And then again, we really would support the same footprint and then would love that PDA would bring some additional programming on Saturdays to activate the street. And it's important to note too, I do want to share that as I worked with the Downtown Association. This is really our plan for twenty twenty-two. The, the PDA would like an opportunity to do this and do this really successfully with the city's help and support. But certainly we recognize that the frequency could be expanded in future years. And you know, would love to, to talk about that as we get past this year's season and see how it goes. And then the consideration that we would need to make at some point is, you know, can our downtown well sustain both weekend street closures and concerts in the park at the same time? So just a consideration there. So wrapping up for you this evening, council, the actions that, that we are bringing forward to you is, is a request to approve a framework for the twenty twenty-two Weekend on Main, the street closures. Again, you know, I've covered the bullet points here once a month on the first weekend. You know, Friday through Sunday, same footprint and PDA programming. Ask the council for its direction on timeframe. Staff's recommendation was May through October. PDAs was made through December. So looking to the council for some discussion and direction on that point. And then here are the council's discussion and consideration for approving an allocation of a hundred thousand dollars in city event sponsorship from the business support fund for the PDA for this year. And that mayor and council, that concludes my presentation. I'm certainly here to answer questions and I'll be joined by Ellen Clark, who is here if we have questions for her. And Mike Tesano is still on the line with us as well.
Oh, right. Well, that is one presentation. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much, Pamela. I, before I open up the council, because I'm sure they have lots of good questions. The first weekend in December is our hometown holiday parade. So what was the thinking that we could have both on, on December, when you talked to these businesses?
The thing, there's a lot of conversation there around, could we incorporate some sort of downtown event programming that augments the hometown holiday parade? I have, one of our restaurateurs has mentioned a Christmas market he's seen in other communities. And so the thinking around the first weekend in December was if the street is already going to be closed for part of Saturday for the holiday parade, is there an opportunity to maximize that and do some other events and programming? That same weekend that really draws folks to the downtown. So you'd be able to, we would have to do some logistics to be able to manage a parade coming, coming through downtown. Not infeasible, but certainly up for discussion and consideration. But it was really based on an idea that you have a lot of people coming downtown and they wanted to build on the holiday festivity.
Okay, you need a lot of parking spaces too. All right. Well, I have other questions, but I'm going to let my council go first, our council. Anybody like to step up and ask some questions of, of our assistant, our acting, our interim assistant city manager? Jack, welcome back.
Thank you. I have, I guess I do have some questions and I certainly want to go first, but yeah, so, so maybe I asked staff, you talked about participation and that actually keyed me into the nuance that we're looking at this year versus prior years where people had outdoor parklets set up up and down Main Street, which we don't know how many people will partake this year of the parklets. So could you maybe elaborate on, on are we thinking businesses that may not have a parklet would expand out onto Main Street? And that's what you mean by participation? Could you, could you help me understand where you're going with that?
Sure. If you recall from the last two years, the Weekend on Main program predates the parklet program or the temporary pop-up program, right? And the intent was to allow our merchants to be able to use the street. And so many of them came out and they set up dining areas in front of their, their restaurant or their storefront, right? And they use just the street to be able to, to set that up and to accommodate pastry patrons who wanted to eat outside and allow them additional capacity, particularly outside when inside was limited. And so that is the same program that we are recommending come forward and that we see happening. But it will now happen at the same time that some of our restaurants have parklets in place as well. So we will have to figure out what that footprint looks like when we get to the, the approval piece. But there are certainly going to be restaurants that do not have a parklet that who do want to come out into the street during Weekend on Main and participate that way. I, we encouraged retailers to come out into the street. Some of them did. Didn't find it as successful as, as they thought that they might. But maybe if there's programming that they can actively join in or participate or, or key off of, there might be some new opportunities that we could help them develop.
Okay, so, so it's a great, it's a great migration, right? Tables come out for the Weekend on Main chairs and then it migrates back Sunday. Because you, yeah, I, I remember now that you pointed out, but also I remember that because we had a lot of the park, parklets, pop-ups that remained. It was just the pop-up tents in a few places. Okay, so that's, that's one part we're thinking that we'll have to work through. And then my other question is with, with the downtown holiday parade in December and, and this going like this, we're talking six or eight closures for Weekend on Main versus the twenty or nineteen or so that we had in, so, so maybe you elaborate. This is the recommendation. This is nineteen or twenty in the past two years to, to six or eight.
That is, that is correct. Taking into all the considerations that we heard from some of our merchants who didn't support having Weekend on Main every single month and who really took a hard line and said what works for us, particularly the retailers, is once a month, right? We know that there are businesses who wanted it more than that, but some who didn't want it more than that. I talked about residents who lived downtown who were impacted every single weekend. And so trying to find the balance and share with you all of the perspectives of the stakeholders that we talked to, right? There is no one answer that makes everybody happy in this discussion. And so really it is a fewer number of events, council member Bolt, but it was intended to be a forward-thinking framework that will allow us to deliver really great programming for downtown now and going forward in the future.
Okay. And then maybe I just also ask, when is the transportation corridor improvements? I think there's seventy-seven additional spots and capacity coming online. When do we think that project will be completed?
I believe I, if I remember correctly, and Mike, you can jump in, but I believe we're trying to get as much done as we can by summer of this year. So that's, that's our intent. It's just
The, the official schedule says the last weekend, eight. But we're thinking it's probably more June one.
Okay. And then with the parklet program that we had in place or have approved just, just recently, that will start with people being able to basically move in May one, right? May one is the, no, March one, excuse me. March one, they'll be able to construct, right?
That is correct. For any business that chose the design review option. They could, as long as they have an approved project, they could start as early as March one on construction.
Going on the street and being out present. Okay. So then based upon the suggested start here of May, we think we're probably going to have an idea of who's out there and, and what they're doing parklet-wise to be able to program this. Is that correct?
That is correct. We will have a good sense of who is constructing and who is in the queue for potential approval from the standard parklets as well.
Okay. Thank you. I think that concludes my questions.
Okay. Anyone else, anyone else like to go next? Councilmember Testa?
Sure. Okay, um, so building on what council member Bolt just asked about when the parklets will be up and running. Do we have a date of when the, the preferred plan and the, the guidelines are ready? I mean, I know that the March first is based on people who are not going to take advantage of that recommended or provided template. Do we have a completed program for the parklets?
So I, what you're asking about, council member Testa, I believe is for that standardized parklet that we said that we were going to create and then be able to pass off to businesses who wanted that rather than go through their own design review. And we are, we believe that we will have that in our aim. And what we've asked our consultant to do is to have that by the beginning of April.
But we don't know for sure, but we're hoping
Well, I, that is, that is the timeframe we are working on is the beginning of April. And that's what we've, what we've all agreed on. So I, I don't want to give you a specific date in case it's a couple of days or a week different, but it's the beginning of April that we will have that from the consultant.
Okay. My concern being that I think it's highly likely that there not all the parklets will be ready by May first. So if we're looking at six weeks and, I mean, six events and the first one, some, you know, I, I think that there will be a likelihood that a lot won't be ready. My other question is, we, there were specific businesses that felt unduly impacted. And would we be able to look at something where the, it was talked about last year, closing half of Main Street in front of the bridal or closing it on the side where the cheese factory and oil are and keeping traffic open on the other side so that traffic can flow just one way and then turn on, turn right on to Saint Mary's so that there would be more vehicle access for the bridal shop, the gas station, and it would be right there by Clover Creek. So maybe give some better access there. Have we really looked at doing that?
I'll answer. I know Mike is, is on the line. So when we talked about this last year, council member Testa, there was a lot of concern on staff's part about opening one side of the street. Because then now all of a sudden we're blending cars and what many people have in their mind is a pedestrian downtown experience, right? And so much as we saw at the intersection of Main and Neil and the first couple weekends on Main, when we started this in twenty twenty, you had cars paying attention to the stoplights, but you also had them paying, trying to pay attention but you also had them paying, trying to pay attention to the people that were walking and all the pedestrians around. And then you had pedestrians that assumed they were in a pedestrian area and weren't paying attention to the cars that were potentially coming through downtown. And I think it's just this confluence of bringing cars and people together and people forget exactly where they are and they're not thinking they're in the middle of the street where cars are traveling. And so for that reason, when we talked about this last year, we said that's not something that we think that we're going to bring forward and feel comfortable doing. I do want to go back and maybe elaborate a little because I think it goes to your earlier comment you had. And I appreciate that the sentiment is trying to help some of those businesses that were really outspoken, saying it, it didn't help their business last year. And what we heard from the retailers, when we talked with them about frequency, when we talked with them about footprint of the event, right? We talked about a smaller footprint, a larger footprint. And what we heard from most of them was, well, if we're going to close the street, we would prefer to close the street once a month and be active participants in it than trying to create different footprints that potentially leave us out or move the action away from where we are. And so the retailers really felt strongly that they wanted to keep with the same footprint, but then just adjust the frequency. So.
When you're talking about the retailers, how many retailers versus restaurants do we have downtown?
I could not give you a specific number off the top of my head, except to say that we do have more restaurateurs than we do retailers.
Right. Okay. Those are my only comments. Well, no, I take it back. Okay. When we talk about the hundred thousand for PDA, that really isn't paying for anything specific to the Weekend on Main. That's just providing contract to support them in general. Is that right? How is that, that funding really specific to Weekend on Main? You said some activities?
Yeah, sorry to cut you off. It's intended to help them find and bring activities that program the street. So whether that's a band that's downtown or some other event or activity that they bring in, they, PDA believes there are going to be some costs associated with those. And so that's partly what that is intended to, to deliver, right? They do not have any additional capital. They just need some seed money to go ahead and, and start to think about what those creative activities are that they could bring to downtown. And some of those will have expenditures associated with them. So that's what that's really intended to cover.
Okay.
And then potentially any staff resources needed to deliver that over the weekend as well.
Okay. Because really the city is paying for all the costs of really doing the weekends on Main.
We are paying for the cost of the closure. That is correct. Yes.
Right. Okay. All right. That's all for now. Thanks.
Okay, excellently pushed a button. Can everybody hear me? Okay, good. All right. There's too many buttons in this microphone. All right. So Vice Mayor Arkin, would you like to pepper our staff with some questions?
Sure. Thank you. Yeah, councilmember Bolt and councilmember Testa asked a couple of them that I already wanted to ask, but a couple of things. So on the, let's see, on the parklets, on beginning of April, the templates being ready to go, if any restaurant owner wants to go that direction. How long, do you, do you have any idea on how long they would take to construct? I mean, would it are weeks, a couple of months, or I mean, any idea? So I'm, I'm just trying to get an idea. Would they be ready to go or close to it in May?
So I think that I would suggest Vice Mayor Arkin that they'll be, they'll be close to it, potentially ready. So what, what I would offer is on our end, because they are using the standardized template that we've already created, it means their review and approval process is significantly truncated, right, from the design review option, right? So we know that we can get them in and because all the work's been done, large amount of the work has been done, right? We can now get them in and through that approval process for a parklet much faster in a shorter amount of time. And so we know that we can turn that around quickly. And then that gives them several weeks to go out and to construct the parklet to be able to have it in place on, at the beginning of May.
Okay. And those that are going through the design review process, that's starting March one? And would you estimate that that could be, they could be ready to go in May as well?
Oh, no. So yes, and let me clarify, the process for design review has already started. So when we opened the application period in January, they were able to apply, starting January twenty-first, when we opened it. They have been able to apply. Our commitment is to get them through the, that process, through all the design work that we, or excuse me, all the review work that we need to do, which I think approximates two weeks of business, business time and then get them through that. So then they could conceptually be starting to build, have an approval to build their parklet by March one.
By March one. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. I think I misspoke on that. Okay. Okay. So that all kind of sounds reasonable timeline-wise anyhow. This is just a quick kind of process question that I'm just curious about. I know on the surveys to the community that you mentioned in the presentation or the outreach, I should say, there was a downtown resident, one downtown resident, one non-downtown resident. I'm just curious as how those people get picked when you're picking just one.
So the, the downtown resident was brought to the table by PDA and she lives over on First Street. And then the non-downtown resident, the council may remember that we had a frequent caller during our discussions last year in 2021. Dave Selinger, he was really involved in sharing input and information to the council. And he was a very big proponent of Weekend on Main from a weekly frequency, if you remember the conversations. And so, you know, we invited Dave to the table and said, you know, we need your, you know, we need your, your thinking at the table too, you know, because you don't live in, you know, you're not a downtown resident and you, you present maybe a different perspective than other people at the table may or may not, not bring. And so Dave was a great voice and spent a lot of time with the retailers, with restaurants as well, but with retailers particularly, trying to understand what their mindset was and how they thought about Weekend on Main and what, what the best outcome for retailers might be if you just took that, that one little slice of what you're looking at. So that's how we chose them.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. And then the question was already asked about the Christmas parade because that's what I had thought too. If it were to go into December, that's always that first weekend in December. But I'm assuming this would apply to other things, like if the soccer parade were to come back, that's generally in September, which would, which would encapsulate that regardless, we go November, December. But how would we do that? I mean, if we were to look at, I mean, I, if we were only to look at the once per month, I know that could be arranged to be one of the off weekends, but if not, those things would all be impacted if we went to an every weekend closure, should those parades of that sort come back, right?
They, they could. If I'm not mistaken, Vice Mayor, we held a version of the soccer parade or at least another parade in 2021. And they just end up staging somewhere and kind of wind their way, you know, past the barricades and they, they do their parade right down Main Street, you know, and because if you recall, when we closed the streets and let the businesses come out into the streets with their tables and chairs, we still leave a pretty significant emergency vehicle access lane down the middle. And it's certainly not all the way down Main Street, right? You have, you have gaps depending on which businesses want to participate. And so they just, they make it work and then we make it, we, we work with them to make it work.
Okay. And just PDA's recommendation, I, I mean, I, I know they put a lot of thought into this as city staff has to, I'm sure. But I just want to confirm, they're pretty confident with going forward with a once per month to kind of compromise, if you will, with all merchants downtown. And they think that would be, they're confident in the recommendation?
I, you know, I think PDA recognizes that there are merchants who would like it more than once a month. And then PDA has heard from merchants, as I suggested to you all, that only want it once a month, right? And, and so knowing that PDA has some, you know, capacity issues, knowing that they want to program it and bring it back in a way that's really meaningful and really enjoyable for this community, that is their recommendation was once a month.
Okay. Okay. That, thank you very much. And those are all the questions I have right now.
You might have been thinking, we had a veterans parade. We had a veterans parade during street.
Maybe that's what I was thinking.
And the soccer was early, early in the morning. Those little soccer players come really early in the morning and then they're gone before, before everybody wakes up just about. All right. Councilmember Nara, do you have any comments, questions, excuse me, clarifying questions?
Most of mine got answered. One thing I wanted to touch on was concerts in the park. And so I think I'm hearing that it's, it's an either or, it's either close Main Street or have the Friday evening concert in the park. And is that because of parking and traffic concerns primarily?
I'll answer and then I'll, you know, if, if Mike wants to offer comments, councilmembers. So it's twofold. One is PDA's ability to deliver on all of those events. There is not enough resources, human or otherwise at PDA, to be, to be able to deliver a really well-thought-out programmed Weekend on Main Street closure. At the same time, they're trying to put on a concert that same night, on Friday night. And so it's functionally just very difficult for them to think about being able to do both of those. That's the answer on the PDA side. We do have some concerns about what downtown starts to look like when you bring the number of people that come to concerts in the park and where they choose to park and then having to disperse all, all of those people trying to park out the other places, right, in the neighborhoods or other parts of downtown when all of Main Street is closed. And so there are some traffic concerns. I, I can't sit here today and tell you it's, it's absolutely a, a non-starter, but it, it is, creates a lot of concern and challenges for us to think about.
So if for no other reason than it goes back to the resources available to PDA right this year until they're able to build backup. Okay. And then I want to go back to the Hometown Holiday Parade, the closure in December. So my recollection of the Hometown Holiday Parade is that Main Street is pretty well closed most of the day, Saturday, setting up for the parade. It may not be quite as elaborate. So I mean, does it, is there no, is there consideration given that you've already got the street closed? Why not just extend it, you know, another day? And programing for the holidays?
I'm, I'm not sure I understand your question, councilmember. I, I do know that when PDA and others thought about closing on December, as I said, they wanted to capitalize on the street that was already closed for that day as well. And I just sort of took a leap that, that, you know, logistically, we could figure out how to make that work, but I might not be answering your question.
I think you are. I, I just, it just seems like if you're going to close the street anyway, pretty much for one day, you might as well do it for the rest of the weekend. So I'm, I'm just, I'm having a little bit of trouble with why you wouldn't take advantage of that, so to speak.
And that was the thinking, yeah.
All right. That's it for me.
And one of the reasons is because we had a rain out a couple of years at Christmas, when you're in December. Great questions. Just a couple of things. I received a comment from these water barriers being very unattractive, Pam. But I have also seen, they look like horseshoes. They're white barriers with, I don't know, two, two feet on the end, looks just like a sea hor- sea, what do we call it? A seahorse. No, that's not right. A sawhorse, a sawhorse. Is that something the city has and could use instead of those water barriers?
Mayor, I'd really have to have additional conversation about that with Mike Tassano, with our PD folks, right? Because the, the whole intent of those barriers is to, to have enough strength to stop impact. And I, you know, what I've been told in working with them for the last two years is it needs to be those unattractive barriers and those water barriers, right? Because they do the job we need them to do. So that I, whether there are other options such as you suggest, and that would be sufficient, I'd have to go back and, and work with my staff colleagues to, to decide if that's enough.
Mike, do you know the barriers I'm talking about? Because we've seen them right out here on Main Street when we've had different, different events happen in the past.
I'm, I'm not from, I'm not familiar with the ones that you described or how you described them.
Sawhorse. Okay. All right. And then it sounds like using city employees for the once a month street closure is about half the cost of hiring out. So I want to make sure that's right. Yeah. Depending on if you're, how many months you go, it's still about half the cost. So it would save taxpayer dollars. And then my last question. Right. Have we, two questions. Have we added any retailers in the last year that you know of? I know we've added lots of restaurants.
I feel like I should know that right off the top of my.
I really think it's pretty slim and I think we've just hung on with our retailers without adding new ones. Then last, last question is, maybe Mr. Tassano could help me with this. Do we enforce parking restrictions on Main Street? I have people that came to me this week and said, if you want to get more people parking on Main Street and turnover for better business, you got to stop the employees parking all day long on Main Street. So are we enforcing that?
I'll probably let someone besides the traffic engineer answer enforcement questions.
I'm not sure that the chief is still on, but if he is, please jump in, chief. I asked the question when you raised the point over the last couple of days and he didn't know the answer. So he was going to look into it and get back to me.
Okay. Because it's critical to those parking spots not to have all day. Anyway, it's questions. Thank you, everyone, for asking good questions. Thank you, Brian, for doing your best on that one. We'll get back with you on that. On that, I'd like to open the public hearing. Jocelyn, do we have anybody that would like to speak?
Yes, our first speaker is.
Wait, before you, before you do, do we have like five or 10? Because it's already 10:18. How many speakers do we have?
I have one speaker card and one more hand raise, so two total.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll stick with the three minutes then. Thank you.
Okay. So the first speaker is Brian Bowers, followed by Andre Pigron.
All right. Welcome, Mr. Bowers.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor Brown, councilmembers, staff. My name is Brian Bowers. I'm the president of the Pleasanton Downtown Association. And I just wanted to say thank you for considering our request to bring back weekends on, on Main. I don't have a whole lot to add to the staff report. The staff report was excellent, along with Pam's presentation. But I just wanted to amplify a few of the things that, that she mentioned. And I think the main thing is, as, as much as, as much of a success as we look at weekends on Main and, and for what it was, there's, there's competing stakeholders that have different opinions about what it should look like going forward. And, you know, Pam mentioned that there's no one right answer. And so we're just trying to consider and value everybody's opinion. You know, the, the residents really liked the closure, the restaurateurs loved the closure, the retailers. It was, it was tough for some of them, even though they realized the benefit of it. And we also heard loud and clear that residents want the concerts to come back. So trying to balance all of those factors led us to the conclusion that we came up with and the recommendation. And as the city was doing their advisory group, our board for the PDA, our own internal discussions and our conversations with the businesses downtown, we came to pretty much the same answer and heard the same thing. So we're, we're very confident in our recommendation. And like Pam said, we're really looking at this as, if, if the council approves it, as kind of a phase one. We want to do a really good job. We want to deliver on the programming. We want to fill up the blank space during the day where the street closure is not being used and really try and. and really try and get the retailers engaged and able to benefit from the closure and, and the amount of people that are, that are downtown. Kind of the council member Narim's point, our recommendation for closing the additional November, December weekends, December is already kind of a soft close because of the parade. It just kind of made sense to go ahead and take advantage of that, to add additional holiday programming. And if we were going to close December, then we felt like we needed to close November also, so that we were consistent with that first weekend of the month. Instead of skipping November and just having December. So that, that's our, our recommendation. And, you know, on a total side note, Mayor Brown, if you want to talk parking enforcement downtown, I would love to have that conversation with you. It's something that the, the PDA would love to get behind, but thank you.
Okay. Hey, Brian, before you go, can I ask you one quick question? Programming, first of all, I think it needs to be family oriented as well, but not just, you know, beer crawls and things. Do you, yeah, do you have any ideas you can throw out of what kind of programming the Downtown Association is looking at?
Yeah, you know what? We, we did a brainstorming session. We got a lot of feedback. And I would say, you know, there was probably more than 20 different ideas that we had, all of which had multiple categories that we could kind of fold underneath. But to your point, yes, we want it to be very family friendly. You know, you know, maybe one or two weekends are, you know, in the vein of a kind of a beer crawl, but most of it is family friend, family friendly with, you know, like a makers market, a family fun weekend, a taste of downtown weekend, sidewalk Saturday. We have a lot of ideas that we're coming up with, you know, the kind of program that holds. It's a long, big street to fill up with programming. So we're trying to have a big umbrella idea that we can put lots of different, you know, categories under and get people out during the day on Saturday.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right, next speaker, please.
Andre Pigron.
You're a downtown resident. How are you, Andre? I barely can hear you, though. Maybe you have something turned off?
Hello, hello. Can you hear me? Hello?
Barely, barely, barely.
Barely hear me. Okay.
Okay, just talk loud. There we go.
Okay, hey, hey, can you hear me? Is that okay? I'll be loud. Okay, hi, City Council. Thank you for putting in the hours on another long meeting. I appreciate it. I'm gonna make a request that you suggest back to the staff that we do weekends on Main every weekend and not just one weekend a month. I think this is the right decision. I think the question we need to ask ourselves is, is Main Street for cars or is Main Street for people? There's a reason why we're not doing, you know, weekends on Santa Rita or weekends on 580. You know, those are the places for cars. Those are where people get around town, you know. But once you get to Main Street, once you get to the social and economic heart of the city, that's really where you want to see people. That's where you want to see families dining, strolling, maybe rolling on bikes or roller skates, something like that. And it really enlivens the street to not have those cars there. I think the ideas for programming are awesome, but I don't need programming. I just need the cars to be out of the way, really. You know, I did a little back of the napkin math and it looks like the area is roughly 150,000 square feet. That's a lot of square feet. That would cost hundreds of thousands of dollars to rent each month if it were a rentable area. Thankfully, you know, we get this area for free. And we get to decide how to use this area, you know. Is this area to be used for helping people circulate and find a parking spot or find a parking spot one minute or two minutes earlier? Or is this area to be used for people to walk, hang out, dine, enjoy? And might I add, for more people to do that, for every car we take off the street, we're adding, you know, a table, two tables, three tables, a group of people walking. One of my favorite parts of Weekend on Main is I get to walk down the street with my nephew. I look forward to pushing my newborn daughter down the street without having to worry about cars at all. I played in the street with my nephew. It was amazing. I am sensitive to the needs of some of the downtown retailers, but I don't think this means we need to throw it away because it didn't work for them. Having more 30-minute parking spots, maybe one-day paid parking spots to help with that enforcement. Maybe having carts or delivery people or ways to get people, people's merchandise back to their cars, just some creative solutions would really help. I, I really think that this is something that we could do. Also, you could think about installing ballers, retractable ballards up and down the street. That would help, help and make the, the budget less of a yearly expense and more of a one-time upfront expense. So please expand weekends on Main to every weekend. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. What would you like to do?
Oh, Mayor, I'm sorry. We have one last hand. That one up. Would you like to hear the speaker?
Yes.
Okay, the last speaker is Jamie Zile.
Right.
Mayor Brown, I'm gonna have to promote Jamie to a panelist because her software is dated.
Okay. She's been working. She's working downtown. All right, there you are. Hi, Jamie, welcome to our council meeting. You're on mute.
Okay, perfect. I'm off mute. Okay, thank you. I'm joining late because my daughter had her end of the year soccer program, so apologies for my tardiness. I wasn't able to listen to everything, but I did read the, the staff notes. I just need to be able to get my customers to my store easier and one, thank you for doing once a month because every single weekend was a huge hit revenue-wise to my business. Just if we could do some sort of signage, the biggest problem that we had was getting customers that were coming from 580, taking Santa Rita and then just having a detour sign at Del Valle Parkway. And so I spent many Saturdays and Sundays directing customers of how to get to my store, even though we are very proactive on Fridays and texting them, emailing them. It's just when they're bringing, bringing a group of, you know, six to eight people with them, coordinating all of that. So I'm just begging if we could take part of that $100,000 into that budget and create signs that you're going down Del Par- Valle Parkway, like you're not lost, keep going. You know, turn left on Division, like here's to downtown. How can we get, you know, customers? Because if we really to, like, just not for my customers, but for all customers, you know, anyone coming downtown, how can we make it the most friendly and welcoming that people can get around pretty easily? Obviously, I would love for the street closure to start at St. John. That would just alleviate a bottleneck in my mind. Because then you can get into downtown a little easier and then take Peters or take Ray Street up. So just please, please, please make signage a priority. The other thing I just kind of wanted to point out, which I was a little disappointed with the group that was put together. The retailer, who was absolutely fantastic, has been in business for less than two years. There are many retailers on Main Street. I've been in business for 17 years and I still consider myself a little bit of a newbie. So it would just have been nice if there was more of a veteran retailer that could have put their input into that retailer meeting versus a store that had, you know, open, open, you know, less than two years. That's my two cents. Thank you.
Those are great two cents. All right, thank you. Right. My speaker, so I'm going to close the public hearing, bring it back to the city council for comments, thoughts, motions. All right, Mr. Bouch, what would you like to start with?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I saw the time, so I'm gonna try to go a little quicker here. So I remember first Wednesdays back in the day. I loved it, loved watching people downtown. So I, I expect that that this is going to be version 2.0 of that blended with Weekend on Main that we had in the past. And that's possibly what, what the PDA is kind of putting together now. I expected there'd be stepping stones to make it sustainable for sure. I didn't expect them to be out of Legos, though. So I do slightly feel like the pendulum has swung back a little bit from what I would expect or hope. But I think from what staffs presented, the challenges are real and, and the working group has probably worked through them better than, than what I can think of tonight. You know, the transportation corridor is coming online, like we confirmed through our questions midsummer. The traffic increased downtown. I mean, downtown parking is, is really packed lately. I mean, I've noticed it myself. And I go there quite often. And then I am worried about the non-active use between the meal times on, when we did have Weekend on Main. So I do think the programming's got to come around, right? Where we program it so that you're trying to minimize outside the meal times with no people, because it was ghost town when it was every, every weekend during that time. And downtown cannot be only for restaurants. It's got to be vibrant with a whole bunch of businesses, business types. And that's how we make the community whole. So I, I I'd like to see it more, there's no doubt, in terms of, of, you know, twice a month or, or what more not. But like I said, stepping stones. And so I understand the speaker's comment about it. I'm on record saying I, I like that, right? We don't want to have our meal while vehicles belching exhaust into my dinner plate. So I don't prefer that. So with that, I, I'll support staff's recommendation. I, I'd like staff's recommendation, both the layout of it. I'll mention I support going through December. I think going through December can work. And I think it's a compromise with the retailers, because when we had it every weekend, that was a significant comment, a significant impact. Eight times, I think, is, is a fair compromise to go to this. And I think, I think rounding it out at Hometown Holidays and that weekend is, is an outstanding anchor point on the backside for it. And we know the weather's been outstanding in November that has allowed others compelling us to try to do it when we did shut it down earlier, right? So I think it could go through there. A quick comment I'll make is that I do think we should have additional signage if we can. And maybe we need to think about it. There's some dollars in that, although we've heard signage is possibly available. And then I'll also mention that we should prohibit parklet construction during the Weekend on Main period. So there's a blackout where no construction. We don't want someone in the middle of a parklet construction operation on the Friday that we're shutting down for Weekend on Main, right? We don't want a half-built parklet, is kind of my comment. But I, I support the rest of staff's recommendation. If you want me to make that a motion, I can, but I see everyone else has got a hand up.
Thank you. Got a motion there. Let's start with that. And then you want staff, since you're only once a month, you want staff to be doing the street barriers, right?
I think that's consciousness. I think that's an outstanding observation, yes. So but, but I would leave that to staff to decide. But, but I would assume they would do that to save money, yes.
Yeah, I think it's should be part of the motion personally. All right, thank you. All right, sounds like we have a motion. All right, Councilmember Testa, you had your hand up next.
Yes, well, let's see. I have spoke with many restaurant owners over the last couple of weeks and they felt like they were making a compromise by saying twice a month. I mean, I, I think every weekend is is too great of an impact on retailers, but asking for twice a month, and that also allows the concerts in the park to be every other, every other week. And the comments that I got in talking to them was Ollie from Bachi said, that I could use his name, and he said that Pleasanton Downtown had become a destination and that it brought something so different to downtown and without it, that his business has been down significantly, more than 30%. And because they are, let's see, he's actually having to turn diners away. He said that he felt that the feedback he got was from all the other restaurants, restaurant owners, was that everyone felt that they wanted to be respectful of the retailers. They wanted to find a compromise. But he felt that it was without question that all the restaurants wanted at least the twice a month, which we saw in the staff report. And that that's what they thought that had been agreed to. I spoke with several others and restaurants, they said the same thing. They said that their businesses have been down dramatically, that without parklets, without the closure, they've been turning away diners. And that they really would request the twice, twice a month, that that is a fair compromise. They do want to work together to support the retailers. There was in the presentation, one of the slides talked about cross-promotion and, and there's a lot of eagerness to do that. So I also, in the staff report, it said that if it is proven a success next year, can be considered maybe adding, well, it's already been proven a success. We absolutely saw the success. And yes, the community loved it. Most people loved it. There was some resistance, some concern. And everyone wants to find ways to support those businesses that felt that it was harmful to them. But again, the compromise being twice a month instead of every Saturday. Although I still heard an awful lot that we're asking for it to be every Saturday. But I think that that compromise is a reasonable one. So I would ask if, Jack, if you would entertain a friendly amendment to say twice a month instead of once a month, everything else the same.
There's no doubt, sorry, there's no doubt I would prefer it. But I don't believe, based on what I've heard from staff and the PDA, that they would be able to program it. And so I'm going to respectfully, even though I, I would like it, I'm going to respectfully see if I have a support for my motion as it stands.
Okay, well, and what I'm hearing is, I don't, I don't think reducing down to once a month so the PDA can create some programming. I think that the program stands alone if necessary, and it shouldn't be reduced. So I would ask to make a substitute motion.
There needs to be a motion in a second before a substitute motion can be made.
Right, so we have a motion, so we're looking for a second.
Excuse me, I'll second Councilmember Bouch's motion.
Okay, now you want to make a substitute motion?
I do. I want to make a substitute motion May through December, every other, twice a month, and
So make it easy, the first and third, so like the first and third weekend. So that way you get your twice a month and they were already at the first weekend, okay? All right, just trying to help you. All right.
Yeah, no, and, and I would really like staff. I think that we should, the city's pretty much carrying the program anyway. I think the city can do the, should do the barriers, even if it's two days, twice a month. So, because it's cost prohibitive to do it the other way. And so that would be my motion.
Okay, I think they said staff wasn't interested in doing it twice a month. Is that right, Pam? Staff would do with overtime once a month?
Correct. I'm not sure I would characterize it as not interested, but because it's overtime, right? We rely on staff to be able to do that. And I know that Kathleen felt that we could really do that successfully once a month, but not twice a month. So if we went to twice a month, we would need to go. So if we went to twice a month, we would need to go back to using the vendor to help out.
Okay, all right, let's let's see if you have a second for your motion then. I'm looking for a second for Councilmember Testa's motion. Okay, fails for lack of a second. Councilmember Narum, you did a second to the motion. Did you have comments?
I do. Thank you. Well, I agree, you know, I would like to, I wouldn't mind seeing it twice a month. But I think we have to be realistic with what we're hearing with PDA coming out of COVID, being short of staff, with an interim director, lack of funding. You know, I think the list goes on and on, and I certainly appreciate their comments about wanting to do it and do it right. And I think that that's probably more important at this point than the number of them. I also think we gotta be honest with ourselves that our Main Street cannot survive with restaurants alone. The retailers and the service businesses that are there are an important component to the making it interesting. And you know, we've talked about the ground floor active use and everything is as part of that. And so I think we have to find the balance here. And I really believe this is a good place to start and and get the parklets out with with the good designs and the safety and everything else. And and let's see what we learn and we can come back and we can do Weekend on Main in twenty twenty-three. We've, you know, we've had the Advisory Committee that we asked staff to do. It sounds like they put a lot of work into this recommendation. And I think we need to, you know, we need to honor that as much as we can, combined with the PDA Board that, you know, are going to be charged with implementing this. So I'm happy to support Councilmember Bolch's motion with the second and a positive vote. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Arkin?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I mean, I personally, I I love the weekends on Main closures, how we've done them. And I think a lot of residents have. But, you know, as others have stated, you know, we need to support all of our merchants downtown. The retailers are hurting, they're struggling just as much, maybe even more so, who knows, as the restaurants. And I think we've got to do something that kind of takes all of their input into account. So I definitely would want to continue the weekends on Main in some capacity, but I think this is a good compromise. And, you know, our city staff's recommending it, the PDA is recommending it. And that's why I asked the question, if they were very confident on that recommendation, and the answer was yes. I happen to ask people in the community, people that I know, people that I didn't know, that I I walked up to and asked, how did they feel about the weekends? They liked them. And when I proceeded to say that, you know, the restaurants love them, a lot of retailers do not. And I explained that impact. A lot of people weren't aware of that. And actually, I, you know, if I weren't involved at the city, I might not know either. And once people heard of that, they understood that maybe limiting it might be a better answer to support all of them down there. So I think, you know, supporting our restaurants and we're going through with the parklets, we're giving money for the parklets. We're doing some sort of weekend enclosure, which I think will be great. You know, I think we also have to realize the impacts to the downtown neighbors. I think that is a real impact, and Ms. Ott explained that, and I think that's a good point to consider as well. People with mobility issues also, I know, had a difficult time with the weekend, weekends on Main of accessing downtown. So this limits the amount we're doing it and and prevents them from having such issues in, you know, patronizing the downtown businesses. So I think all of that, I think for that reason, I think I'm very supportive of the current motion. I also, the concerts in the park, I know a lot of people like those, myself included. And to have those come back on a more regular basis is something I think a lot of residents would really value as well. So I I would say that one other good idea is the signage suggestion by Ms. Zile. I I think is probably a good idea, because out of town, out of town patrons to our downtown are not familiar. And I think if we could expand on that signage part, I think that'd be a good idea. But other than that, I'm I'm very supportive. And I I know the retailers wanted to stop at October, but since it is only going to be once per month, I think going through December is reasonable. And as Councilmember Bolch said, kind of having it, you know, conclude with the the parade and the holiday happenings downtown, I think makes it a little more special as well. So I'm supportive. I have the money going for the programming as well, which I think will also benefit our businesses and our residents. So I'm supportive.
Okay, well, it's quarter till eleven, so I'll be very brief. We've got a lot of very important retailers downtown. We've got Studio Seven. I was having a conversation with Clover Creek. We have the gas station, and of course, we have Wine Stewart and so many more. So we need to have a balance. Good business downtown means not just restaurants, not just gas stations. And it means everything. So we need to encourage them. We still have some empty spots downtown. I'm hoping the PDA can work with the commercial real estate agents to fill those. And let's keep downtown fun. I love it family-friendly, of all the things that Mr. Bowers said that they're going to work on for programming. And as of today, you know, mask-wearing is becoming more limited. So you can take your mask off more places than you could before. So we, hopefully, we're coming out of Omicron and out of COVID years and into really fun and inviting areas. So I see your hand up, Councilmember Testa. So if you can be brief, and then we'll we'll move on to our last agenda item.
Absolutely. You know, I want to be very clear, because I think that there was an implication that going to two days or two closures a month is not supporting the retailers or the businesses. Again, if you are looking for balance, it would be two days of closure a month and two days where it's not a month. And that is taking all of the businesses into consideration. And again, reading the staff report, how clear it was that the restaurants were very sensitive to their fellow business owners by saying that they wanted to support the retailers by making sure that the time was was split half and half, two weekends closed, two weekends not. So certainly, it isn't not supporting the retailers to suggest that two days a week of close, closing Main Street is, I think, the balance that our community was asking us for. That's all.
All right, thank you. Can we have a roll call vote?
Yes. Councilmember Bolch?
Yes.
Councilmember Narum?
Yes.
Councilmember Testa?
For the record, very clearly, it's because I do support the program very much that I'll vote no.
Vice Mayor Arkin?
Hi.
Mayor Brown?
Hi.
The motion carries four one.
Okay, it is eleven minutes, and we saved the best for last, Ms. Olson, Director of Finance. Our annual comprehensive financial and other related audits for the year. So you're having your your work checked. Have you been? How is it going?
Fabulous. Good evening. Hopefully, we can make this brief and not, you feel like you're tortured. Okay, well, good evening. First, I I wanted to explain, we used to call this the CAFER. And it turns out CAFER in South Africa is a derogatory word. And so the Government Finance Officers Association has recommended that everyone change it to ACTFER. So it's the annual comprehensive financial report. And I did want to also note that we met with the Audit Committee and the city's auditors and the city finance staff and went pretty thoroughly through the report on January twenty-sixth. So we have the benefit of that, and that's Councilmember Narum and Bolch that are on that committee. So as you know, we prepare this annually, city staff and and the city's independent audit firm. Last year, we selected a new audit firm, LSL, and this is the first year of their five-year contract. We prepare the ACTFER. According to guidelines, we, GFOA and GASB are the two that we adhere to. And you'll hear a lot about new GASB rulings, and that's how we modify and change our ACTFER accordingly. Of course, this is just to go over what's in the ACTFER. There's the letter transmittal that gives the bigger picture of what is going on in Pleasanton from sort of the economic perspective. So you'll see a lot in there about median home prices, unemployment rate, what's happening with changing leases and businesses in town. And of course, we have a section on what the city's conference serves the major technical projects and capital projects. Interjectory section, we talk about the GFOA certificate of achievement. We got it last year, twenty-fourth consecutive year for the twenty nineteen twenty cap, CAFER, because it was both cap for last year. The financial section, we have the independent auditor's report, and they have had no material exceptions to the city's financial report. Management discussion analysis, that's where we look at. We do comparative analysis from the prior years and give the results for the entity's overall financial position. And we discuss capital assets and long-term debt. It's more of a discussion. Basic financial statements, government-wide financial statements, fund financial statements. And then, of course, where the real details are in is the notes to the financial statements. And then, of course, you have the supplementary information. I'll just pass through that one. So net position, the city's net position, total assets exceeding liabilities, seven hundred fifty-two point nine million. That's an increase of three point nine million from two thousand nineteen twenty. Looking at the capital, what what comprises our assets, capital assets is the biggest category, six hundred and sixty-eight million. That's a decrease of three point four million. That's that's really a result of depreciation. And then, and then we, I like to highlight, as you probably know from prior years, what what actually money do we have? When you look at cash and investments, we have a total of three hundred and five point three million dollars in cash and investments. Those receivables of twenty-six point four million are money we already received. It just hadn't been cash in hand by June thirtieth, but we have it now. And then, of course, we have notes receivable, twenty-four point four million, that net investment in law of less sixteen point four million and then hundred thousand in inventory and prepaid expenses. And then going through liabilities, two hundred and seventy-eight point nine million. Pulling out over to the right, looking at our pension-related liabilities, the pension and OPEB, the other post-employment liability, the retiree medical, and then LTFT net liability. That net liability is entirely pension-related. So that all totals two hundred and twenty-one point five million, or almost eighty percent of our liabilities. I think Kathy Narum had noted, it's interesting, it's two hundred twenty-one point five million. We have more cash than we have liabilities. So if you want to get a sense of our financial position, that should give you some some comfort. Payables, long-term debt is fifteen million total. Claims compensated absences, five point two million. Deferred inflows and outflows, I think, as you know, pensions and OPEB, the the calculation, the actuarial calculation is there's a year lag, so it's as of, when you look at those reports, it's as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty. When you look at the liability numbers, it's June thirtieth, twenty twenty. So those deferred inflows and outflows is is recording what happened during the course of that year, the city's contributions, any changes in assumptions that happened during that year, and it gets put into those deferred outflows and inflows category. So now I'm kind of looking at our government, just looking at the fund highlights, governmental funds. That that includes the general fund, one hundred fifty-two point two million dollars, an increase of three point two million dollars in the prior year. That excludes all the long-term liabilities and physical assets. Really, what could you spend? The general fund balance is forty-three point seven million, and that's an increase of six point four million from nineteen twenty. Have this slide in here to talk about, that's different from what you saw in the year-end budget report, by nine point three million. The rainy day fund, seven point four million, is included in the general fund balance. We have one point nine million in par's earnings that have been received, but we don't include it in the fund balance because those earnings are variable, I mean, in terms of it being above the principal. And then eighty-one thousand unrealized investment gains. So this is just looking at it by the different fund categories. The oranges is the twenty twenty-one available resources versus nineteen twenty. So you'll see the CIP went down a bit, and that makes sense, because we had cut the CIP to create the rainy day fund. Special revenue funds are down a bit. Miscellaneous CIP is doing a little bit better, twenty-one point four million versus nineteen point three. We we had included in the, from the year-end fund balance, some money into the miscellaneous CIP, so that's accounting for that. Loan some housing funds up by a little bit over a million dollars, and then there's the general fund increase. And then looking at enterprise funds, both the water and sewer had a big year. I mean, excuse me, had done better in twenty twenty-one financially than they did in nineteen twenty. The total increase for all enterprise funds is four point five million. That includes with the golf, which also did better, storm drain is about the same, and then another non-major and that includes cemetery and paratransit. Now, the internal services funds, the biggest category in there now is that par's section one fifteen pension trust at twenty-nine point four million, and then repair and replacement is at twenty-one point two million. We have a slight decrease in that one. Employee benefits stayed about the same, but all, overall, it's two point seven million dollars greater than in twenty nineteen twenty. So here's our outstanding debt. Overall, we've been paying down that debt, six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. The golf course note payable is the federal loan that the golf course got. And if they use it to keep employees on staff, it would convert to a grant, and so it will be converting to a grant. They met those conditions, and you'll see that in next year's ACTFER. And the other notable one here is that the California Clean Water ESAPAR loan, looks like it went up and it was just at the end of the audit with the state, that was the final adjustment based on the final project cost. This pension liability, it did go up twelve point, twelve million from the prior year. When you look at pension liability next year, it'll come down quite a bit. This really reflects the fact that in nineteen twenty, CalPERS had about a four percent return on investment. So that was well below the discount rate, and that increased our liability. And that's really the main thing comprising that twelve million dollar increase. When I do the mid-year budget in two weeks, I'm going to go over where we're standing based with CalPERS and the city's unfunded liability and what the projected payments are going to look like based on their most recent analyses from the twenty twenty-one, investment returns of over twenty percent. So I include this in here. I know a few council members have been interested in just paying attention to those two par's accounts. So again, we have a two par's accounts, the pension trust fund. One, we have in capital growth, a long-term investment. We had initial contributions of twenty-one point three million in twenty eighteen. As of June thirtieth, then went to twenty-nine point four million. They're all in the par's section one fifteen pension trust fund, internal services fund, and that was on page two oh five. And the conservative, the short-term investments, that's part of the city's general fund reserves. Total contribution is sixteen point seven million to date and valued at eighteen point six million through June thirtieth. And this is the chart I had in last year, too, just tracking how we're doing, comparing investments. So we look at the par's conservative and compare it to how the city has done in terms of investment returns, and it's five point four percent versus one point nine. So we have been beating the city's investments with the par's account. And similarly, we look at the par's capital growth and compare it to how CalPERS has done. These are average, by the way, average annual returns since July twenty eighteen, when we established the account. And we have beat CalPERS as well by almost a hundred basis points. And then the OPEB liability, as we've been noting in the past couple of years, is continuing to go down, and that's from the investment returns in our account. Now we have CalPERS, the CRBT count. So we've got 2% reduction in that liability, total of 852,000. So LPSC issued separate audited financials reports. I, I think you're going to get a copy of them soon. We just got them from Livermore, who does the financial manager for LPSC. And then, as I said earlier, we share the net position with Livermore. And that was the number I shared earlier in the slide. So sad news, we, we did have an audit finding this year. The finding was a lack of segregation duties when approving two journal entries. This past year, I had a financial services manager that has been on an extended leave. She's returned, but she had been on extended leave. And I assumed her responsibility for a couple of months because we thought she was going to come back. And that seemed easier than trying to, to come up with an interim position. So I was approving journal entries. And then I went on vacation and in the city's financial system, it called you forward your approvals, your workflow to another person. And I, the other financial services manager was acting in my stead while I was on vacation. I forwarded the approval to him. He created a journal entry as a financial services manager, and then he approved it as the finance director because we had my approvals. And that's a lack of segregation duties and that's a big no-no. He shouldn't know better. So, so we had a corrective action. I think the good part about this finding is we learned from Tyler that in the system, we can activate a feature that prevents anybody from receiving a journal entry or any other actions in the unit. Whoever created it, they, they couldn't, no matter, even if they got forwarded the approval, they would not be able to approve it. So we now have activated that in the system. So we have that checked in place. And that concludes my presentation. And open to any questions?
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions before we open it up to the public? All right, seeing, seeing none. Do we have anyone from the public that would like to speak on this agenda item?
Do you have any speaker cards? However, there's one person in the room. If, if you would like to speak, please raise your hand at this time. It does not appear that we have any speakers for this.
All right, then I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. What would you like to do? I usually like to go back to those of you that sit on this subcommittee. So Councilmember Narum, would you like to make comments and maybe make a motion?
Sure, thank you. Well, I'll move that we accept the fiscal year 2021 audited reports. And a few comments, you know, I think congratulations to Tina and her staff for yet another unmodified, clean opinion from the auditors. And they've also achieved the highest standard in government accounting, that certificate of achievement for excellence in financial annual reporting. I want to point out the Destination Pleasanton booklet that was all of 14 pages. That was a I think a very well-done, easy-to-read summary of our, of our finances versus the 250-page comprehensive financial report that is an inch thick, that Councilmember Volch and I spent probably two hours asking a lot of questions on many of the charts and numbers and things. And we, all of our answers, I think, were satisfactorily answered. And I also, I know Tina mentioned it, I want to point out again, I think it's really important that, that residents and even, even us as the leaders recognize that the current assets of the city, the cash are exceeds the liabilities of the city. And I, I would hazard a guess that there's not too many cities that actually can make that statement. And I think that's a testament to the good financial stewardship and fiscal responsibility that past councils and this council have followed. And, and I, I I think that's just amazing, actually. And so with that, that's my motion and, and generally my comments to keep it quick.
So your comments are staff recommends the city council accept. So you're accepting the audited reports. Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Bolch, you also sit on the subcommittee. Would you like to make comments?
Just briefly, I'll second the motion. So I, as Tina presented, they are the new auditors, LSI for 2021, under a five-year contract. So it was a lot of questions were asked about their performance as well as our, coming on as a new relationship with us. So we discussed that and any disagreements with staff and management, and there were none. And that does lead to the thanks to Tina and her staff for the good work they are doing. She mentioned the significant deficiency. We asked significant questions about that as well. And we're satisfactorily responded to with all of that expansion of scope and, and also change controls on the IT process. The water and sewer funds I'll just mention have higher than our policy reserves. But I think we all know, both with our PFOS challenges as well as our sewer issues, that those are probably justified to be a little above, and we've discussed those numbers as well. Not a place to have an under reserve. And then just in the end, it is interesting through all of COVID where the city's at in its financial position, which has actually strengthened from 2020 to 21. You know, property taxes increased, sales tax ended up overall increasing. But the transit occupancy tax from our hotels and stuff is still significantly down. So just a comment. And then just because I, I do, you started benefit plans. The CalPERS pension shows more than ever why we need the 115 plan and good stewardship by those before, before I was on this body to set that money aside. And we will have in, in not too far future a challenge of meeting the obligations out of current operations, right? And so that's where that draw on the 115 will be essential so that city services are not possibly impacted. Where that year is, I get to wait until a couple of weeks for the two-year, for the mid-year budget update. So I don't know exactly the year, but possibly a little later in 28 or 29 is where we think we will land. So thank you very much and, and thank you for the finance department's hard work year over year. So.
Are you, are you seconding the motion?
I did, yes, sorry.
Okay, good. Just want to be clear. All right, we have a motion made and seconded. Councilmember or Vice Mayor Arkin?
Yeah, just real quick, I too think, want to thank Ms. Olson and her team for all their work on this and having clean audits and everything is really great to see and great job on all of that. And I also want to thank Councilmember Narum and Councilmember Bolch for your work on the subcommittee. I know it's a lot of work. As we know, a lot of these committees can be. So thank you for all your, you know, thorough questions and all your oversight role with the subcommittee. So thank you for that. And that's all.
Fantastic. All right. And Councilmember Testa?
Um, yeah, I'll, I'll pass on asking some questions given the hour and just compliment the report and the strength of our fiscal position, the city's fiscal position. We've, we've definitely got good people who have looked out for us in that regard. So thank you for your work.
Terrific. All right. And I want to make sure I heard right, that CalPERS is returning a 20% ROI?
Actually over 20, I think it was like 21 and a half.
My goodness.
Yeah. Yeah, it significantly changed the picture of the pension liabilities across the state. And it'll really impact what the projected contributions for the city's going to have going forward. But I'll present that in the mid-year and we'll have an updated 10-year forecast with that in there, too.
Well, I'm looking forward to that. And of course, there was a couple of us here on the council that helped establish the 115 pension trust so that we could fill those gaps in those extremely tough years. So we still have our rainy day fund at 7.4 million, which is nice. And I also appreciate our finance director being very forthcoming about the item that was found and reported in the letter to all of us on the council explaining what happened and why it happened and how it's not going to happen again. So thank you. And you still got an unmodified review. So that's terrific. We have a motion made and seconded. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Narum?
Aye.
Councilmember Bolch?
Yes.
Councilmember Testa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Arkin?
Aye.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
All right, we're almost done with our meeting. We have some brief reports from any meetings you're attending. Especially if you've represented the city of Pleasanton. Do we have anybody with a brief report? Yes, Councilmember Narum.
Thank you. I have two real brief laptop Wheels Bus. The most, most significant thing is that you will now see the Madden Memorial Cruiser driving around. It's going to be rotated between the cities. And you'll recognize it with the picture of John Madden and, and the designation of the Madden Memorial Cruiser. It's really well done. And then second, Lafta is rolling out the plan for developing zero emission buses. I think this is kind of appropriate, given the cap 2.0. And good old Valley Links, the train has hired the new executive permanent director, which is a huge step and has now started taking legislative advocacy positions on things related to rail and transportation. So another big step for the agency. And that's it for me.
Hey, thank you. All right, Councilmember Bolch?
Yeah, so I'll just mention Stop Waste. So Stop Waste has been working on 1383, which everyone is understanding is basically trying to work for landfill diversion. So we don't fill up our landfills. They've pivoted slightly to start looking at or retaking up the issue of reusable foodware. And primarily that would be to-go containers. Think of your Starbucks cup or your thing that's used for a one-time use. Those during the pandemic have really become a major landfill challenge. And so it's not only for takeout, but also in dining in. And so Stop Waste is, is working on that. And I, I think I'm having, or I asked staff if they could send through the presentation, Mr. Dolan? I know, they, I just sent it to him. So I know that, so we're going to try to have the presentation passed on to the other council members. But try to, try to reduce your impact, please. Thank you.
There we go. All right, thank you. And, and Councilmember Narum, you stole my thunder a little bit, but yeah, it was a few of us got together at Wheels Bus and we said, geez, John Madden passed away. He was a rider of buses. And we have these wheels, we contacted, or I should say staff at Lafta contacted the Las Vegas Raiders. And they were so excited, they gave free photos for use. We had the bus company that does the wrap do it for free also. And I saw the bus today. It was in town. It was over by the Stanford Valley Care Hospital. And yesterday it was at the memorial. So our Wheels Lafta bus from here, Pleasanton, Dublin, Livermore, went to the John Madden Memorial yesterday, and it was out there with his own personal bus. And you will see it now that we can do it for free because the Las Vegas gave us credit. And the bus wrap advertising company said they do it at no cost also. So very cool. It's going to go through all three cities and over to the school district. So really, really fun. And yeah, I saw it today. I was shocked. There it is, there it is, like a fan. So with that, thanks, everybody. Thanks for all the hard work you do. And it looks like Councilmember Testa has a comment.
Yeah, um, let's see. So I attended the Tri-Valley City Council Dinner hosted by Dublin. We had a presentation about Valley Care Stanford is applying, competing to bring a trauma center to the Tri-Valley. That was interesting. Concerning that we don't currently have one. And I attended a CalCity's Housing and Community Development Committee meeting. And the most interesting piece of that is CalCity's mission statement is to support local control. And their mission statement is one sentence and with the word local control, the words local control in it. And they are now talking about redefining what local control means. So that makes me feel a little less supported by CalCity. So it concerns me. That's all.
Okay, would you take us out with your closing statement?
That would be me. Pleasanton City Council adjourns this meeting with a tribute to our nation's men and women serving in the military and with gratitude for every United States veteran who has bravely answered the call to service. Further, we wish to honor the memories of those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in conflicts, both past and present in defense of our country.
All right, thank you. Meeting's adjourned.